Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah, I'm kind of excited about it.
And then I just, yeah, I just heard of another one that's looking so.
Yeah, when does that open, Eric?
Uh, they are really close. I just talked with the building today and they think that probably this week, later this week, they'll be able to funnel it.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, it's exciting.
Exciting.
Yeah, it's a co-working space for artists.
Oh, in my neighborhood, in the...
Your neighborhood.
Yeah, I love that. It's gorgeous.
Yeah, super close to getting ready.
I was looking to you about that, yeah.
So, have you been over there already?
I've just checked it out numerous times as it was going up.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dolan Gaiman is the artist that owns it.
Hmm.
He does mixed media.
Uh-huh.
He makes some really cool stuff. He made a, like a drugstore Indian out of recycled license plates and, I mean, it's amazing.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, how, that's like full height.
Wow.
It's really cool.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure he'll have some opening when he does.
Okay.
Open, so we'll make sure you know.
Well, how are you?
I'm well, sir. How are you?
You look like you were cut up. Not feeling all that great last week.
Yeah, sinus infection and ear infection both, so. I don't recommend, I don't recommend flying with that. Yeah, that, that's not good. It's good to be back. You have a much better time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, is it totally gone?
Yeah. Yeah, typically, you know, I get susceptible to sinus stuff and then once it hits, it's like bam. But two, three days of antibiotics and it's gone. Yeah. But I didn't read the, I read the bottle incorrectly, so I was so tired Sunday when I went to the Instacare, it said, "Take one tablet by mouth twice daily," and I thought it was once daily, so I took one a day on Monday and Tuesday, then finally, or Sunday and Monday, then finally I read the bottle and I said, "Ah, it's supposed to be taking two of these a day."
Maybe it would have been over by Monday.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Yeah, it's crazy. No tea tonight?
Yeah, it's in my bag. I have to pull it out.
I get it.
Where is this?
Yeah, I made it say you grabbed the tea.
Yes, it is.
And I thought it was just like a regular ginger twist. Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't sleep for two days.
Yeah.
I'm so physically tired that my brain may not shut up. No, I don't drink any of that. I don't drink caffeine at all. Something like... That was bad.
Eric, I'd go into withdrawal.
Do you?
Well, yeah, but you drink those energy drinks.
Yeah.
I barely feel ill anymore.
Well, she's done. How you go home and sleep after that?
Yeah, you know, I don't, quite easily, believe it or not. I never drink it in the morning.
I have a throwaway, I have a, one of those like throwaway guns, like please have? I have a throwaway computer. I can do that one.
It is, yeah, that can be used.
Actually, it's very nostalgic.
Stephanie, are we ready?
It's good for your digestive system.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's city council study session. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is MOA presentation and a representative from the Museum of Outdoor Arts is here to present an update to council. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So, my name's Tim Baca. I'm the, most of you I know, but for those of you who don't, that's really why I'm here. I wanted to introduce MOA to some of the new council who have not maybe had the experience of educating, being educated by MOA. But I'm the director of programs over there at MOA. Should I move this?
That's pretty good.
You're a little live, but that's okay. We'll take care of that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna scoot it out. You're fine.
Okay. Great. So, I oversee all the exhibitions and education programs and I just wanted to kind of give a broad summary of MOA and kind of what's coming up. As you all know, we do an annual report in October to council and at that time we'll address more of like population served, the funding element and all of that stuff. So, our, our mission is broad. It's making art a part of everyday life. And just to get into the, a little bit of the history, again, for those of you who are not familiar, we were founded in 1981 by Greenwood Plaza developer John Madden and his daughter Cynthia Madden-Leitner. And the way it got started is we always incorporated, or John always incorporated art into his developments. And so, out of that was born MOA and they started tour programs around the art that was installed in the Greenwood Plaza area. And it just grew over time. We did lunchtime concert series at what is now Fiddler's Green and we ended, we always worked on, with borrowed space. And so, eventually we grew and had a gallery and were able to amplify our programs. So, in 2000, we actually moved here and we brought about half of our collection here, half of our outdoor sculpture collection. In total, we have approximately 85 outdoor pieces. Some of that fluctuates because sometimes we'll have temporary exhibitions, sometimes they'll be, mostly they'll be permanent. And so, half of the collection resides here and we'll go through that too. But just for the, the new council members, we are on a 20-year lease with the city and it was in five-year increments, so we exercised our, our right to extend that every five years. And so, we're in our last extension at this point. That wraps up in 2020. And so, the city very generously provides us with this lovely space over here, as well as the outdoor space for $1 a year, and in addition, provides us with $96,000 in general operating support. That was, that's been happening every year. And then in exchange, per our agreement, we're supposed to provide 13 sculptures, which we have more, and I'll get into that, and also at least $50,000 in programming every year, which we far exceed. Last year, I think it was about 600-some thousand, so. And a little more about the organization itself. We have five full-time employees, three part-timers, and we do have a board. There are six members on that. And we bring a lot of artists into Inglewood and expose them to this lovely community. Some of you may not be familiar, but we do have part of the collection in Greenwood Village, so these images just kind of give you a broad overview of what that looks like. Most of the images here you see, other than the disc and the dolphins, are actually on loan from, from the family collection. We have a sculpture park on the north end of Fiddler's Green Amphitheater, which we actually own. It was, the land was donated to us back in the early 80s and we actually leased it out to Ancheats Entertainment Group right now and they do all the bookings and then we get a simple lease fee and a per-ticket fee. That's largely how we're funded. So, Marjorie Park's on the north side. We do a lot of events there. It also acts as a VIP entrance and exit for anyone attending a concert. Otherwise, it's open to the public during the day. So, if you haven't been, I would highly recommend you go check it out. And for those of you who may not be familiar with Fiddler's Green, it's an 18,000-seat outdoor concert venue, established in 1988, originally under MCA Records. It used to just be tiers of grass and it was considered an earth sculpture. And like mid 80s, 85, I think, MCA Records approached MOA and asked if we'd ever thought of making it a formal venue. And so, that's kind of how that happened. And we originally signed a 25-year lease with MCA Records, which expired in, I guess it was 2011 or '12, and then AEG took over. And this is one of our beautiful features we have, and we do tours of this. It's a living wall and that's inside the amphitheater and it follows the pattern of a sound wave. And we replant this every year, so we always look for volunteers to come help with this kind of, this project. It's 30,000 plants. It's a lot of plants. So, now, of course, you all are familiar with Inglewood. We have 37 outdoor artworks here in Inglewood and we're adding to that, you know, from time to time. And as well as in the building, there are eight works throughout the building. So, the piece here on the right is actually the latest acquisition that we acquired last year by Daryl Potorf, who we did an exhibition with. He's a Florida-based artist, but has international acclaim. Some of the other program offerings we have are walking tours. So, we have a self-guided walking tour. There's an audio guide. People can call in on their cellphones and hear more about the sculptures. It could also be downloaded on our website. We also do formal tours. Anyone can call in advance and book a tour and we're happy to show them around Inglewood, around Greenwood Village, any of our sites. And we'll do group tours. We do a lot of group tours for schools and elderly groups, special needs groups. We also have a robust conservation program. We like to keep our sculptures looking nice and pleasant for the community, so we do that on an annual basis. And this is one of our more popular installations. It's inside the museum. It's permanent, our Cabinet of Curiosities and Impossibilities. It's based on fairy tales and nursery rhymes and we actually just sort of revamped it, so if you haven't been there in a while, you should come check it out. But it's very popular with our patrons. And we have an exhibitions program. I'm just gonna run through some of the recent exhibitions we've done in the last couple of years, just to give you an idea of what the space looks like and it changes. This was a very popular show. It was a light-based sculpture show by Mel and Dorothy Tanner's retrospective. Dorothy Tanner is 95 years old and she's still working. She's amazing. We really love working with her. So, we darkened out the gallery for this and installed, I think we had about 50, close to 50 pieces. It was very popular with our patrons. And actually, she's showing at the McNichols Building in Civic Center in Denver right now. And then we showed Daryl Potorf, that sort of spiral piece that was on a few slides ago was his sculpture that we acquired. And this was a very interesting show. He's a high-profile artist, not so much in Colorado, wasn't, has never showed in Colorado, but it was really nice to bring him here and expose Colorado to his artwork. And then every year, we also do a education exhibition. So, this is our, from our Design and Build program, where we take undergraduate students in our studio that are led by a professional artist and in six weeks, I'm sorry, eight weeks, they completely build out an exhibition. They get to install it. We have an opening and it's up for a few months. And there's always a theme around it. We also feature our Design and Build alumni in the atrium space during that same time period. And then last year, we, we worked with the bank over here and showcased the Charles Deaton Building. We got the original plaster model from, on loan from the Denver Public Library and it was a very successful exhibition. I think the community really embraced that one because they were so familiar with the building. This is a father-son duo, Charles and Colin Person. This is our last exhibition with Craig Marshall Smith, which there's photos of later. We also support the calendar exhibition that the city does every year. We help jury it, we install it, we host the reception, and it's always a lot of fun. We do that every fall. So, this is Craig Marshall Smith, who is most recently in the atrium and as well as in the gallery space. He was also our last artist in residence. So, getting into education, we have, as I mentioned, Design and Build. That's sort of our premier education program. There are a few council members, I think, in this photo. This was a mural that was done on Broadway and I don't know if many of you have seen it yet, but it's still there. It's vibrant and beautiful. So, we worked with Inglewood High School students in the classroom. We did about eight workshops. We worked with two professional muralists who educated the students on what the mural-making process is and they learned, they had no idea what they were doing at first, but they learned the process and then they, they saw it through. So, you have the before and after. And then I mentioned our gallery session, so I won't really talk too much more about that. So, they kind of, it's very hands-on. They get to do everything from create the ideas to the actual artworks and then install them. So, I referenced our Artist in Residence program. So, when we're not using our studio space, which is about 1,000 square feet in the back of our museum, for Design and Build, we use it for Artists in Residence. So, we have two residencies every year. We bring in local artists for that. So, these are just some of our recent artists. Jen Gormley has been amazing. We've actually been doing a lot of workshops with her at Charles Hay and I think she just did one this week. So, she'll go in, she's done these recycled sketchbook classes for kids, so they get to learn how to sew, as well as create their own sketchbooks. She has all these really interesting papers that they can choose from. They assemble them and then they learn how to sew and then they have a sketchbook. So, I think in the last year and a half, we've probably done about, oh, maybe eight to 10 workshops with her. So, not just at Charles Hay, but in Inglewood. That's... Our current Artist in Residence, it's actually a duo. They go by Priz Magic and we're working on them, on a really large project with them that I'll get into real soon. So, you may have noticed, we had to unfortunately postpone our upcoming Robert Rauschenberg exhibition, which is a really big exhibition. Unfortunately, one of the collectors that we're working with, who would be loaning about 85% of the works, had complications on their end and were no longer able to loan the work at this time. So, we did postpone it and that's just the next time we could do it, so. But it's in development. So, we will be featuring pieces from our indoor collection, which is always a nice opportunity because we don't always have those out on public display. So, getting back to the current Artist in Residence, this is a big project we're working on in 2019. I don't know how many of you are familiar with immersive art installations. Meow Wolf is sort of the biggest household name at this point. They're based in Santa Fe. Well, this is a local group. They're working on a bigger endeavor called Priz Magic and they have a really interesting pop-up in their studio space in Denver. If anybody wants to see it, let me know. We can tour you through it. But we're working on completely taking over our indoor space, our gallery space, to do an immersive exhibition that'll last the entire year for 2019. And we will ticket it because we, we hope it'll be very popular, but we will have to sort of control the crowds and all that. We'll also have SCFD free days and, you know, other opportunities for the community to come out and see that. But it's going to be a very interesting show. The theme is based on a forest, sort of a, a forest of mythical creatures and it'll be a lot of fun. I usually pass the press on upstairs to City Manager's Office and hopefully you guys see some of this stuff in your packets. But we do get a fair amount of press, which is good, and we just like to make sure that you guys know what's going on in that regard. There's a delay here. Oop, there we go. Okay. Yeah, there was a great press on the Deaton exhibition in the building last year. We also do a lot of paid advertising and of course, we always promote Inglewood as a sponsor in every collateral that we produce. We have a lot of different events throughout the year, not just here at our headquarters, but also sometimes at our sculpture park or other places. We often will incorporate performance as part of these events, so it gives the community opportunity to see usually free performance. We also create films and you can go on our website and see some of the films we've done. But the latest one we did was down here at Daniel Sprick. He's a local painter. We worked with Caro Public Television to produce an hour-long documentary on that that was tied to an exhibition we did a couple of years ago. And that should air nationally this year later, so that'll be good, on PBS. We also produce catalogs from time to time to further the educational component of the exhibitions. And we also offer lots of different community support. You know, we sponsor sounds of summer concerts and we worked on the block party this last year and worked with schools and all of that. So, I kind of mentioned the schools there. So, that's it. Any questions for me? I hope that educates you a little bit more.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Baca? Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say thanks for this presentation and thanks for everything that you and MOA does for our community, particularly as it relates to our students. I've heard nothing but great things from the students that have gone through the programs and the students who worked on that mural. I know that was really exciting for them, a really good resume builder for them as far as their art career goes. And love hearing about the sketchbooks at Charles Hay. That's really, really cool. And I love that Marjorie Park Sculpture Park. My office building is across the street from there, so I would love the lunchtime series to come back.
Yeah.
And I didn't know you guys kept, were in charge of that living wall inside the amphitheater.
Yes, we are. Have you ever toured it?
I haven't, but I've seen it there at a concert, but I've never taken like the official tour.
Okay. Well, we do living wall tours if everyone did.
Yeah, I definitely do. Yeah. And people visit that park all the time. I work across the street from there and see people walking in there throughout the day all the time. So, yeah, so thanks for everything you do for us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you too for the presentation. Can we get a copy of this sent to us?
Uh, yes, I sent it upstairs, so you should be receiving a copy.
Okay, good. I thought, maybe I didn't download something. I was speaking to a family whose, one of their children is at Craig Hospital and I think they had, they've been here quite a while. They're not from in town. And I think they came through some things and a lot, I don't know how long ago. And I wondered whether, are you marketing to Craig or Swedish in terms, it was really, a really restful place for them to come, given what they've been going through.
Yeah, I know we've had patrons from there in the past and they are on our list, but yeah, we should probably follow up with them.
I just wondered, it might be a great asset for some who are particularly going through things, those from around here but out of town too. It's, it can be something really life-giving when you're going through traumatic changes and, yeah.
Yeah, we do see a lot of people...
It was very positive because it was free and they could come through and I think they've been through it a few times.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I always appreciate that. I won't take offense. It was titled "Presentation to New Council Members." I guess the old one.
Yes.
No, I think that was very nice that you came. I did just want to give a heads up after the last couple of years of presentation, that there was the expectation that there would be a little bit more financial information on the organization provided. So, when you come this fall, if you can just be prepared and a little bit of heads up. I think especially with the issues with the homeless and different organizations and 501(c)(3) is in the community that people are, are understanding that any organization that they would give to you, they would want to make sure that there was that disclosure of exactly how the money is being spent and how it's being used. So, if we could include a little bit more of that this fall, I would greatly appreciate that.
It would be helpful if you could identify specifically what you wanted to see because we've always brought the program, what we've spent on programs. Yeah.
Just what you're required to do for your 990, for your 501(c)(3) kind of financial would be great.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation this evening and I just, I have a question since you have, you're responsible for the, the fixtures or the statues and stuff around town. Do you ever change things out? I mean...
What you see out here is part of the permanent collection. Occasionally, in the past, we have had temporary exhibitions. We'll, we'll put temporary sculpture out there. But right now, what's out there is fairly permanent.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that question, I remember two years ago on the night that I got installed on council, so it was a little over two years ago, some gentleman came about one of the statues out there that was offensive. And so, I was wondering if, if you would ever consider changing perhaps that one out. I mean, I'm just putting it out there for thought right now because I have not forgotten that since that gentleman shared that, so.
Yeah. Well, that's not really up to me specifically, but I can definitely let leadership know about that. We did address that issue at the time with the formal letter. That was the only complaint we've ever received on that piece in, in the whole time we've owned it. It was actually our first acquisition in the 80s. And what we educated the gentleman about was it's really about a woman's survival through breast cancer.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know what else to say about that, but...
Okay. Well, I was just, uh-huh.
Yeah.
All right. I appreciate that.
Not meant to be offensive.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez. And we want to, we need to hurry up and finish up. We're a little running over.
Yes, just to kind of piggyback on what Mayor Protem Russell said. I know the maintenance and installation of all the sculptures is really expensive. It's much more expensive than we would ever think it is. I know through my work on Culture Arts Commission and how, what small pieces we have to play in that. So, when you bring the financial information, can you also bring some information on that? How much it takes to maintain and install, those kind of things? Because I know that's a, a big budget item.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Councilmember Wing?
Thank you. Thank you, Tim, for that wonderful presentation. Even with what I know, I learned something still tonight, so thanks. And one more note, MOA and you are a staff member serving with the Cultural Arts Commission, so you play a very significant and valuable role with that commission.
Yes. I try to go to as many of those meetings as I can.
Even when you don't go, I know you contribute a lot, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Hope the good art.
Our next item on the agenda is presentation on homelessness. And the Inglewood Police Sergeant Reed McGrath is here to give us an update on the, on the Platte River cleanup. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, at council. City manager Eric Keck asked me to come and do this presentation so you can see the scope and magnitude of this project that we were involved in, along with hoping and understanding of some of the implications that go with it. We became aware of this problem. Okay. And looked at it for several months in terms of how do we, how do we deal with this issue? So, you can see the long list of people at the bottom that we were involved with this project as we went through it, from urban drainage and flood control, different cities, different local service provider groups and churches. And then pretty much every department in this city seems to have played into this in some way and some role at some time. These maps give you an idea here of the scope of the problem. This is just the first slide. Just north of what you see, the red arrow, the first camp is the city boundary along the Platte River. It's kind of unique in there if you're not aware of that. It doesn't go up to the service center, but there's a pipe that goes across. That's basically where the city starts and that's, that's our first set of camps. So, we identified each of the camps. We GPS-located them. And one of the reasons that we did that was so that we could keep track of people's property in the event that we would have to remove any of that. And we did have to remove some of the property. So, we had it stored in by camp number and location so that they could get it back if they chose to do that down the road. So, more camps on here as we move south. And there was a nice concentration of them there in one area. There's a nice little benchmark area there and then some more down here. And this is, this is the end of them. And the last one was just barely into the city. There had been some camp activity in Sheridan down there just a little bit as well. And Urban Drainage and Flood Control did a little bit of work in Sheridan there as well. We went in ahead of time. We posted the whole area. The day that we posted the area, we brought in several service providers, including All Health Network, which is, for some of you that have been around a while, Rappo Douglas Mental Health is now All Health. So, we had a case manager therapist from there. And we met with everybody that was there. We gave them the notices personally. We posted them so that they would know what was coming and what to expect from them, what resources they could access, and also how to get their property back.
Did you provide that post?
Did you provide that post in here? I don't, I don't think you did. I would have liked to have seen what it said.
I don't.
You can see it, it's right here.
I had to do a fair amount of zooming, but I was able to.
I can see that, but I don't have x-ray vision for that. Can you read that?
Yeah, yeah, by the order of the city manager. I mean, you can see it on the electronic version, so what you're asking for is that specific one.
Yeah, I would like it to be, I would like to see the post of what you posted there so that it would be in the back, and so somebody doesn't need to extra-large it up on a screen to go ahead and figure it out.
Certainly, I'll get with Stephanie on, on getting that to you, as well as the pictures that we talked about.
If you could just include that in this presentation, I'd appreciate it.
After we posted, this is what we were faced with looking at, and this is several of the campsites that you're going to see through here, and it was just absolute, absolute mess. It kind of looked like being in a third world country where there was just total neglect. You can see in the picture here, there's hypodermic syringe or two in there. We found a fair number of those. Obviously, those are a concern for anybody that comes in the area. Graffiti issues, more of the trash issues. And these are pictures of, of more campsites that needed to be cleaned up. This is somebody's tent. If you look at the living conditions in there, it's deplorable. And then we get to the human waste problem that is concerning at many levels, including the wastewater treatment plant that has to deal with potential of any of this washing into the river and affecting their test results. This is a before picture and an after picture of the exact same area. Parks Department played a huge role in being able to execute this. Urban Drainage and Flood Control paid for all of the vegetation remediation, but because Parks came in and did the cleanup, they were able to do more towards the vegetation remediation. And the vegetation remediation was important because it eliminated a lot of the ideal camping spaces. Part of the, the idea was to make sure that there aren't flood issues, but also to, to make it less desirable for activities that were not legal. So it's still very accessible if people want to go down there and fish or do something like that, it's very accessible, but it's not as desirable for people to camp there. Trash pickup went from the fourth of January to the 12th, and mitigation went, started on the fourth and went through the 26th. And this kind of gives you an idea about some of the underbrush cleanup that was done in there. To my knowledge, and I've been here since 1992, nothing has ever been touched along the river there. There's been no vegetation remediation, so they were long overdue. There could still be more done, there's, none was done on the west bank of the river. This is all east bank work that was done here. And this is just a cleanup after video showing you, and Sam, how do I get this to play? I showed this presentation to the South Platte Working Group. They're looking at what can they do to fix some of the issues in here. You can see that potentially a trail could be put in there, that's one idea that we had. We talked about potentially a fishing pier. And as we go through this video, you'll see some birds underneath us, and up on the left here in a minute, you'll see the cleanup crew doing the vegetation remediations, just finishing up the day that this video was shot. This is from Dartmouth running south, and this is where the majority of our issues You can see the cleanup crew or the vegetation remediation crew starting on the upper left of the screen there as you look at it. And this point here is where we go into Sheridan. We didn't calculate the police cost of this project because we're here all the time, this is kind of something that we just do on a normal basis, but we looked at the vegetation remediation as well as the estimated cost for Parks employees, and the project cost, if you factor in the police presence, well over $40,000, but without the police presence, it was just under $40,000. A $29,000 in actual vegetation remediation, and then a substantial chunk of, of time and kind from Parks Department to fix the issues and work on them. And that is the presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Sergeant McGrath? Councilmember Berentine?
I understand that, I mean, not only the presentation does, but you're giving this presentation to...
Councilmember Berentine, I don't think they can hear you.
Thank you very much. Kind of you. I understand that you're giving this presentation to a couple of other entities too, and I understand that Littleton is interested in doing something similar. Is that why they're asking for this as well?
I think that they wanted the education piece out, was their primary interest. They don't have some of the problems that we do. The entire South Platte River in the city of Littleton is under Colorado Conserv- Water Conservation Board control, so they're able to quickly move in and remediate those issues. We don't have that in our city, so at this point in time, we're still trying to figure out who actually owns the river area in terms of being able to enforce some of the trespassing and camping issues that are, are happening there, should they occur again.
They seem to have the same problems, I mean, especially around Carson Nature Center, along Aspen Grove, all along that area, they have the, they have the same problem, and they've got the High Line Canal as well. So I don't blame them for asking for this presentation, but I, because I do think they have a significant issue going on, not, maybe not as much as, we have a little farther south here. Was the area posted after the cleanup? Because it was my understanding that there was some material that was left there waiting for hazmat kind of things. Was that area posted at all during that period of time to make sure people understood that, you know, while we were still finishing up the cleanup, that it wasn't safe so they didn't go tripping over some bucket?
Those posted notices were up there the entire time of the project.
They stayed for the entire time? Okay.
To the best of our ability to keep them up there.
Okay. And then I think with any project like this where you spend funds and, and the pictures look great afterwards, but how long do you think it's going to stay that way? Because I would have heard some concerns that it's returned, and returns can return rather quickly. So is there some follow-up that you're going to be doing? I don't think it looks just like those pictures right now today, is what I'm hearing from people, and that's what they're concerned about. So is there some kind of timeline, or is there some additional enforcement that's been done afterwards to try to keep this and maintain the work that got done?
I was up there last week and took a look. I didn't see any activity. If there is any camping activity, it's pretty limited, and I especially concentrated south of, of Dartmouth, but I also took a look at the north area, and without walking the whole thing, I didn't see any camps at all. In terms of the enforcement follow-up, it's difficult for me to enforce camping because we don't have a camping ordinance that adequately addresses camping on the river. Camping ordinance is fairly limited. That may or may not be something that council may want to approach at some time. There are some council ordinances out there, particularly one from Boulder that stood some tests of different groups that might contest it, that potentially could solve that problem. Property ownership, once I find out who owns property down there, if it's the city of Inglewood, we're inclined to think it is based on roadway and easements from roadways. We can do a different approach there. We're also looking at other avenues to hopefully prevent this from happening again. The vegetation remediation should help some of that because it makes it a lot less desirable and it removes some of the ability for people to set up camps.
Is there, so it is legal currently to camp down at the Platte?
Yes, that would be my interpretation that it is.
Okay, could we get a copy of that? Because I didn't realize that. I mean, if, I mean, who knew families could go down there and camp if they wanted to? I mean, I was not aware of that. So I assume that if there's an ability to camp down there, it wasn't just for homeless or vagrants, it was the ability to camp down there, so that other people who wanted to fish and bring their family or do whatever could have done it as well. So I was unaware of that. If you could provide me a copy of that, I would greatly appreciate that.
I, I can't provide that to you directly because there isn't anything that specifically says you can camp down there, but our ordinance doesn't address it that says that you can't. So I don't know if that would be something that would come from the...
I guess the council will have to look at all the things that we don't say you can't do and see if that means that you can by default. I will take that issue up, but thanks for clarifying it.
Thank you. How long in advance did you notice post before you started the cleanup?
We posted it on Thursday and we began the cleanup on Tuesday. We worked with people that were not able to move out in the time that we posted it. We worked around them, we worked with them to make sure that they had adequate time, so that I think the last group had two weeks from the time of posting until the time that they actually had to get completely moved out.
Okay, and then how many officers were involved in the, well, in moving everybody out?
It would vary based on the day, but primarily the impact team, which is, is four officers and me part-time.
Okay. And the one question that I had, because I think this all happened about the time we were doing interviews of applicants, and a few applicants said that there were homeless people sitting on the bridge, and it didn't appear as though anybody was there, like, you said that Wellspring and a lot of the Giving Hearts and all of those people were involved, so was there no resources for them on the day they got moved out?
That was a dynamic time. We had resources available. The vast majority of them chose not to utilize any of the resources. Several of them did sign up for services with All Health Network, and I think out of five that signed up, three actually came in for follow-up appointments. I talked to one young lady who was going to a shelter in Denver. Some of the people chose to move into Denver from there, and then we had some issues pop up with some people moving along Rob Roy Road.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. And that does lead into my two questions. In none of the pictures do you see people, and I was wondering what sort of encounters you had while you were down there. Was everybody amenable to moving along? Clearly, they didn't pick all their stuff up and go, but people were just moved down the road?
We had a very, very positive experience working with the people down there. One morning, we even fed them on kind of one of the more critical mornings, and we didn't have to make any arrests or, or force anybody to leave. We had a one particular camper, and what happens in these situations is sometimes it's almost like a motel. It's not like these are permanent residents, all of them. We had a person that came in just for the night, hadn't been there in the days before, and he was kind of angry, but that was the worst that we had, and it wasn't even his stuff that was, that had been there based on how we'd identified people.
Were there any citations issued along the way?
We made one arrest for a felony warrant at the first camp up in the 2,800 blockish across from wastewater treatment plant, but we did not issue any citations.
And that's, so everybody was having ID checked, if I'm to understand correctly, if that gentleman came back with the felony warrant?
It was actually a female that came back with the felony warrant. So we were endeavoring to identify everybody there for their property and, and just so that we would know who's down there for resource-wise.
Thank you. And judging by the pictures, clearly this was something that had to happen. That is hard to look at how bad it got down there. Having said that, $40,000 is a pretty substantial expense, not including the time of law enforcement. Will this be an ongoing matter? Councilmember Berentine alluded to, maybe it's already kind of returning to a prior shape, not nearly as bad, but is this something that biannually, annually, you can expect to just, you have to go down there and move everybody along, clean up again?
My estimation would be that we won't do a major cleanup project like this for some time, because the bulk of that money came from urban drainage and flood control, and a substantial chunk of that was year-end money that was left over, which kind of drove us into having to do things a little bit quicker than we would like to, but they had to spend the money by the end of January. It was actually 2017 money, and they, they found the money, and they said, "We really need to work this area." So I don't think we're going to see them have that kind of money available, the $30,000 that they had in the next several years. I would expect small projects, and, and I would hope that based on research that's occurring with who owns the property and even potentially a camping ordinance at some point, if that's appropriate, would help us be able to deal with that on an ongoing basis as opposed to it getting to this point again.
Sure, and I'd be happy to discuss the camping ordinance. And, and that does, I think, answer at least partially another question I have, which what was the catalyst for this? I'm sure it didn't get that way overnight. I would imagine this was on Inglewood's radar for a while, if not other jurisdictions as well. It was the additional funding that you guys had at the end of the year?
It was urban drainage and flood control funding that, that was actually the catalyst for this. I started becoming aware of the problems and getting phone calls from citizens. We were getting reports from citizens up there on a fairly frequent basis, officers that are working patrol, reporting back to us about the concerns. It was coming in from a whole variety of sources, and when I went up there and took a close look at it, I realized this is a significant problem that we have to deal with in the best way that we can. So it was really from multiple sources. We began meeting with Colorado Water Conservation Board, Urban Drainage and Flood Control, and then some of these other groups became involved with us in terms of, of how do we go in and remediate this? And, and basically that was the result of them doing the cleanup along with our Parks Department.
Sure. Okay, very good. Thank you, Sergeant McGrath, thank you, you've called, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Berentine?
So the concern is, is if you can identify it as Inglewood property, then you would be able to do something about it.
That's correct.
Okay, so...
With some help probably from some other city departments, it's going to have to be posted. Probably Mr. Keck is going to have to enact something that says there won't be any overnight camping down here.
I'm not asking the question correctly, because my concern is that if, if we can identify it as Inglewood property, then we can do something. We already know we've got power to do that.
Okay.
So we, I don't, I mean, from what you said earlier, I don't want to be worried that people could just be camping in the city center here and somehow for the lack of a camping ordinance, you guys would go, "We can't do nothing, darn it. Council needs to do an ordinance." But if we, but since it is Inglewood property, you can do something about it. It's in the identifying it as Inglewood property, and in that, it would already be able to be taken care of without any additional ordinance.
That might be a question too that might be more directed towards the city attorney for the specifics of how that would work. We believe that there are tools that would be in place from our perspective, but we would have to have something more identified from the city.
Okay, because what, what is being said already is concerning me that in our parks and in this amphitheater right out in front here, that you're saying that we don't have something that would prevent people from just camping there now?
I can clarify that. The parks are closed from 11:00 at night to 5:00 in the morning, so that's very...
City center isn't though?
Uh, city center though is Eve Property...
Which has its own prescriptions and rules, which would not permit that to transpire.
Okay, so...
So we don't have...
Just checking, because I don't want anybody listening or who might think that all of a sudden that that's available.
We don't have a problem in the parks with people camping overnight because our patrol off... officers aggressively patrol them at night, and if they are in there...
Well, they did significantly last summer. And, so, so do our citizens, or at least the parks in my district, they aggressively patrol them as well. But...
Good, because that's...
We have had issues with that, even with it being closed.
We did at Duncan Park.
But, you can do some, you can get, okay.
Yeah, we did at Duncan Park, and I think we, we got that addressed through everybody's channels.
What is it going to take to find out who owns the property along the plat? You would think that that would be a pretty, we would know.
It's more complex than what one would believe, because the river has changed shape and direction over time. We are most likely going to have to do some title work, quite frankly, between the Sheridan border as all the way to their Denver border to ensure what is and isn't controlled by the city. To complicate things even more so, the American Civil Liberties Union has provided persons who are homeless with certain rights to allow them to camp in, in public places. And, so, we need to be in harmony with respect to what those laws state and stipulate, because right now, people can list addresses of, "I live under the bridge at Dartmouth," as their, as their legal address. And, so...
They can list that they live at City Center. I think the mayor knows that specifically.
However, again, we're watching the legislature very carefully during this session for this very issue, as legislation is being pushed to allow for homeless individuals to camp, have the right to camp in public places. And, so, we're constantly and continuously being vigilant to watch these types of, of things. And, so, it is more complex than meets the eye, but you're right. We do need to identify, and we are working with engineering and Public Works to ascertain ownership, while at the same time keeping an eye on what's going on at the legislative level.
And, since we didn't have an ordinance, or we don't have an ordinance to do that, how were you guys able to do this? How did Urban Flood and Drainage, who I, I don't know what they own or what they have title to, since we're all, we're confused on who all the owners are, how, how were they able to allow this to happen?
I can answer that question. Urban Drainage and Flood Control has broad, and they, again, they worked with also the Colorado Conservation, Water Conservation Board. They have broad powers with respect to health and safety, specifically charged with infrastructure for the dead, the dead trees and brush that was there, to call that a public health and safety concern, for them to be able to get in and do the work that they need to do, to do that clearing. And, and the sergeant is correct, that work has not transpired for a few decades down there. And, so, they needed to address the number of invasive species that had died and the trees that were there, because if, in fact, the water does come again, we actually have some rain or significant precipitation, those trees would then have the opportunity to wash into the river and take out critical infrastructures. So, under that prescription, Urban Drainage and Flood Control had the right to go in and do that clearing.
Except for the, most of the damage that was done, the health and safety issues were not trees and underbrushes.
Correct. Health and safety, you're absolutely right, and...
But, that was the reason that they were able to go in and then do this. Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you Sergeant and Chief, and the Impact Team, and Parks and Rec, and everyone who had a hand in that. Just wondering if there, if through this process, if we needed to do it again, is there anything that we would do differently or take a different approach on if we had to do it again?
I would hope that we would have more time, and that we would have less of a mess to clean up. That would be very, very...
Definitely. It's pretty bad.
Ideal. I, I would also hope in a bigger picture thing that there were more resources for the homeless. That's, that's always a, an issue that we run into, that we just don't have enough resources for them. But, in terms of the actual operation itself, I think the operation went well. Our goal was to not make any arrests, and we didn't, other than a felony warrant arrest. And, we were able to treat people humanely and make it the best possible situation that we could for all involved.
Thank you, and thank you for updating us on this.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you for the hard work you all keep doing. It was a difficult couple of days, and it's a mess, and no one's ever happy totally with any of, anything when you have to move people like that. To what extent could the South Plat Working Group, do you think, be of help? I mean, I do remember cleaning up the plat in maybe 2001, maybe two. We had Keep Inglewood Beautiful joined with the Greenway Foundation, and we did, was from the north all the way down. I don't know if you remember, we were pulling out Safeway grocery carts and things like that even, but it was nothing like what it's becoming the last summer. But, that was more of a coordinated effort all up and down. We had Boy Scouts helping us, we had all kinds of people volunteering. I could see some things like that continuing on as a part of an environmental initiative to just keep cleaning and keeping it up. It doesn't solve the camping issue, but it does keep that kind of eyes on it, people on it, making sure things are going on. I don't know if that helps.
Activation of the river is the number one way to solve many of these issues. And, the South Plat River Working Group is very interested in putting a bike trail through there. There's such a heavy use on the trail on the other side, and they see some legitimate use for putting a trail on the east side. That would eliminate a lot of problems. I know that they're, they're looking at that, at least they were at the meeting I went to, and you may know more about that as it moves along.
At the last meeting, was that talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you might have been out of town for that one. And, I just went to the one, which was plenty to experience it, but...
It, it's an interesting group, because there's really not necessarily any money or anything. Everybody has to decide to do something together on the other grants. But, it might be a little bit more expedited if we know the other cities are experiencing summer things, where we could band together for that to make sure that we have at least the continued cleanup going on. Obviously, the path and the bike way may, will make a big difference with use, and there are segments that just aren't used, that make it easy for people to do what they're doing. The civil liberties thing is an interesting one. Do we have, I know you're on the CML, Councilmember Martinez, have you seen anything with what was initiated at all?
It's been quiet so far this, this session. However, towards the end of last, last session, last year's session, this, this was introduced, and, and it's been threatened to be brought back again. So, we're, we're keeping an eye on it closely.
It's not on this year, though.
Not yet.
Yeah, I think it got...
But, as you're aware, bills get introduced and they move quite quickly.
And the last minute.
Yeah.
So, I would love to see us come up with some kind of a plan for, for camping, but obviously, we need to figure out what, who owns what. That's what makes it difficult. It's interesting, I, I traveled in Finland and Scandinavia, but they don't have an issue with homelessness, just because the way they, the way they deal with their social issues. Some don't like that. But, but they do have camping laws, where you can camp one day in a park anywhere, all the time. So, we did see people who, you know, were sort of moving from park to park throughout, and, but there were more families and people are camping and running through. But, I don't think that's the case for any American places that I've seen of. But, how do you actually provide for outdoor kind of possibilities for people who would like to enjoy the outdoors and the kind of amenities of that? So, we, we might want to think of both sides of it, not just an issue of homelessness, but for people who would like to enjoy the river and participate in what's, what the river has to offer.
Thank you. On the biohazard piece, that wasn't cleaned up right away, but it looks like that all got cleaned up by the time you took the drone. Was all the biohazard stuff cleaned up by the time you took the drone?
I believe that it was. That was something that Public Works had to kind of go into some secondary steps to clean up, especially those buckets. There was two buckets of waste down there.
So, I mean, urban drainage and flood control mitigated it because of the brush, but if there becomes a biohazard problem down there again, I would think that we could do it on that alone. Chief Collins?
Oh, my, one of the questions that was raised is, you can't let this get to where it was. And, since there is, there are a number of entities that are involved here, Sheridan, Littleton, Inglewood, and, and some of these other private entities, you can pull resources together to do that same effort that Reed and Company just did. You know, if, if we do determine it to be a, in a city property, then maybe it becomes a new capital project, you know, and, or at least, at least certain funding can be set aside to, to put forth with other entities to help get that area cleared again. You can't go back to that again.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And, I did, we drive down by there occasionally, and we were down there last week, my husband and I, and from the road, you could not see anything. Before, when we would drive down Plat River on the east side, you could see grocery carts and stuff full of stuff up on the top, and we didn't see that. So, I agree. And, I mean, we've talked about the homeless issue at, at several different venues, about coordinating resources together. And, so, I think we probably do need to talk about that as well.
And if you make it, you know, a nice bike path and, and more comfortable for folks to visit, you get more of a buy-in from the, from the community, you know, as a whole. And, then it makes sense to keep that up, you know, whatever, you know, I, I wouldn't think that it would be a big financial burden, but that's where you have to invest in, so.
Alright, thank you very much for all the hard work and, and getting that cleaned up, and, so, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your support.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks to see you.
Moving on to our third agenda item, emergency management discussion. Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf is here to discuss the establishment of an emergency manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm bringing friends. Alright, good evening, council. I'd like to introduce a few folks tonight. In response to the cyber incident that we've talked to you about previously, we put together an internal team to talk a little bit more about how we can do a better job in emergency management. So, starting with Commander Tim Engler, who you know, our Communication Manager, Alison Carney, along with, for the first time, I think in front of you officially, is Jeremy King, our new Deputy Director of IT. So, he is helping us out tonight, and Margaret's out of town, so he's in charge. So, he gets to be a part of this tonight. So, we'll go fairly quickly through a presentation. I think first, you know, everybody understands the types of incidents that require some type of emergency response, and we list several of them there. The cyber incident was one that we'll, we'll reference quite a bit, since it happened directly to us. There's a whole bunch of others out there, and we'll be sharing kind of our perspective on, from where we sit, what, what makes us lose sleep at night, what keeps us up, what we think about, and, and why this is such an important issue. If you're familiar with what happened with CDOT, very similar ransomware attack, same thing, City of Atlanta was down, cross the board for five days. It's not just about the cyber, although that's, that's probably the most threatening issue that we're seeing across the board for municipalities, other entities. But, we're positioned right on a rail. There was a, a small town in Quebec where half of the city was wiped out because of an oil tanker that, that went off of its tracks. Obviously, mass shootings is something in the news and happens all too frequently, you know, not just in supporting the school district, if something, God forbid, were to happen there. But, you think about this building, the Aurora Theater Incident was another example of that, a major snow event, flooding. So, I'm not trying to scare you on purpose, but I think that the point is, is that these things happen. And, the way that we respond as a government to that, not just in, in response, but in all different facets of emergency management, impact the community. So, not only are we talking about if something happens, how do we respond and make sure our systems are in place, but also, how do we prepare? How do we mitigate potential impact on the community so that the disruption's less, the cost is less, or, or injury and then life losses is less? So, we'll, we'll be talking about it kind of from, from that angle. I'd like to have Commander Engler talk a little bit about the steps that the department takes in emergency management, but also how their perspective of, on an emergency manager, or at least our, our way of trying to mitigate against those disasters, would be assisted by the presence of an emergency manager. And then, each of us are going to talk a little bit about kind of the circle and some of the elements of emergency management.
Good evening. Right now, we work very well with Rappel County as far as emergency management planning. We currently have some software programs in-house in the city from a cal, a company in California that is a COOP planning, which is a continuity of operations planning program that's provided to all the departments in the city. That software is given to us, well, we pay for it, but a contract is negotiated through the Urban Security Initiative, our, our region here. So, we share that same COOP planning software with Rappel County, Littleton, Denver, South Metro Fire. So, we have those, those tools to use, but at this point, they're a little underutilized. We don't have somebody that is really spearheading the, the push in COOP planning. It's just been kind of pushed on the various departments and the various department directors. We've tried to do some educational things to get somebody in the various departments to, the COOP planning has things that address succession planning, contact information, resource lists for equipment. All those things would be in each department's COOP plan. So, if we had to relocate out of this building or any other city building, we'd have that information to take with us. We'd know where all the resources were. Public Works would know exactly how many dump trucks they have. The Police Department would, would know exactly. And then, we could ask for additional resources from other entities throughout the, throughout the region. Right now, we're just kind of a haphazard approach, where we, we fill gaps and, and do what we need to get things done. We're very reactive in, in how we would do things. We're kind of falling down on the preparedness and mitigation part of things. A perfect example would be the, the cyber attack, when pretty much the, the IT department took the lead role in that, and they were basically the emergency manager running everything that was going on in that incident, when that kind of took away from them being able to concentrate on what was going on. And, so, an emergency manager could step back, deal with all the department directors, and seamlessly kind of run the Emergency Operations Center. And, I don't, do you want me to go into the EOC now, or wait?
Well, I think we'll, we'll get into some of those details. Do you all want to expand on some of the, the wheel?
I will. I think we're losing Doug, so we'll try to, we'll try to pick things up over here. I'll just give the perspective from the Communications Department. Obviously, having some coordination from an emergency management would be helpful when, I don't know if any of you are familiar with a town where the media has descended after a, a big incident, but it's pretty unsettling. And, I think now you have about 90 seconds to craft your message before the media will, will craft their own. And, I think it's about every 20 minutes is the news cycle to have your, a new message out, or to reiterate whatever your message is that you're sticking to, and it's two to three minutes on social media, even if you're repeating the same thing. So, obviously, if there's a big incident here and the CNN van rolls up, hopefully that never happens, we're, we're going to need help. And, we have, you know, myself and the Police Department has a sergeant that acts as their PIO, but that's about it. And, so, to have the extra coordination and the help with the crisis communications plan would be huge, to feel like we have that backing us.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. So, I want to back up, I want to back up a little bit of what he was saying about a cyber event, and how an emergency manager could help us coordinate through a cyber event, especially in IT. Because if, I mean, in IT, if our systems go down in every, in every aspect of everything we're doing in cyber, whether it's snow or for the emergency manager, if they don't have communications and we can't, and we can't operate the city, the emergency manager will be able to help mitigate that until we come back online and then get to, get to a phase where we can actually operate and serve our citizens. So, for an emergency manager, it's really helpful, instead of us having to actually manage the situation of what's happening, the emergency manager can reach out to other agents. agencies, can reach out, you know, for those other resources to help us out of what's happening out there. So, it's kind of important, you know, we need to get the systems up online, you know, as fast as we can, and on top of it, there has to be kind of an order of, you know, what's the most important service to bring back online, whether it's internal or external to our citizens, and what's going to be provided to that, so. And bringing those systems online actually helps emergency management actually coordinate, coordinate the event that's happening, whether it's a cyber event, whether it's a snowstorm, whether it's a shooting that has a lot of coordination between other agencies, you know, it's real important to do that, and also making sure that all the forms are filled out. So, like in the recovery phase, with FEMA, they're really strict on what's, how your forms are, and, you know, you make sure you have your, you know, your T's crossed and your I's dotted, so you can actually get some funding back from your emergency event. So, if you don't have any of that documented properly, you run the risk of not getting reimbursement back from FEMA, and FEMA will give money, will reimburse on an emergency event, but your documentation has to be done, and that's where emergency management comes into play, is making sure that our processes and we're doing all that stuff properly, and then also building those, that training in on a day-to-day basis. So, we're, so it becomes second nature, and where I've seen it happen, become second nature, is I would say the floods in Boulder, where Boulder County actually, before you did anything, you filled this form out, and you did that, and that helped them actually provide the proof and the documentation to get to FEMA. I don't know how much they got, but it was an easier sell to FEMA to get them reimbursed.
And that's certainly how the wheel kind of comes back from recovery to mitigation. If you just look at it solely from a cost perspective, you think about our latest cyber incident here, we were lucky enough, proactive enough, to have insurance on that type of incident, and we're able to get some reimbursement, which is great, but there is a deductible you have to hit, and if you just think about, and you're able to calculate staff time devoted to that. Because it was a lengthy period of time before we were back up and running, because of some of the lack of systems being in place, we hit that deductible. Now, we were able to get reimbursed, but the point is, is that you can't get back loss of productivity during that time period, and if it's a larger incident and it has greater impact to the community, obviously, that's, cost is going up, so. Some of that is related to just making sure that these incidents are least impactful as possible to the community. Okay, so we'll rip through some of these aspects just quickly. We touched on a number of them, but I just want to give you an idea of what aspects of, what does successful planning look like in terms of emergency management? What role would an emergency manager function play? Certainly getting our emergency operations plan up to date, we talked about this last time we spoke to you, this is the document that's ultimately approved by the city council, more than anything to get authorization for spending, so that you understand when the emergency manager or the city manager declares an emergency, what we're authorized to do in those, under those circumstances. We'll define the role of the emergency manager, so your city manager can be your city manager in that, in the incident, and the emergency manager can handle the response. Also defines the incident commander, who's more on the ground, separate from the emergency manager, and it establishes the EOC, which is what Commander Engler mentioned. Do you want to expand on the EOC at all?
Right now, the city EOC is the training room in the police department. It's basically got some floor jacks for phones, and that's about it. It's really never been functional, and we've never had to stand it up and use it. As part of the new planning for the police building, there's a very modern, totally functional, multifaceted EOC that's going to have multimedia screens, it's going to have a place for the elected officials to be in an emergency, separate from the actual work groups, the essential function work groups. It's more of the state-of-the-art emergency management center. It's the kind of place that we could all go and run an emergency efficiently and effectively. And, you know, right now, we just don't have that capability, and as part of that, there's a definite hierarchy and structure that is involved with how one of these incidents runs, and you need a manager to run that kind of thing.
Hopefully, we're not experiencing one right now. That would be, hopefully, that's not the case. Continuity of Operations Plan is also referred to as continuity of government plan, another aspect, making sure that we understand what is the priority response. So, how do we get, which services are most critical depending on the incident? Also, looking outward into the community to make sure we understand what critical other business services are out there that we need to focus on and get back online. Each department and division should have their own COOP, as we call it. Those are supposed to be continuously updated. Some departments are much more proactive than others. Our wastewater plan is one that updates that consistently, others not so much. All of them need to be updated and work in concert with each other. Another function of an emergency manager to work with departments, to make sure that we have this in place. Business impact analysis is another. Again, this would help us define some of our plans. This is really looking at not only our internal response, but also identifying what some of those critical functions are out in the community, to make sure that in the event of an emergency, we can get these back online. Anybody want to expand on that? Risk assessment, similar, you waited too long, sorry. Again, this is more looking at what types of incidents are we vulnerable to. I mentioned rail as being one of those, that's obvious, flooding, we have a river running through parts of the city, we've talked a lot about our floodplains. So, again, understanding what areas are most at risk, and potentially, what areas should we put some funding behind to mitigate that risk. So, again, another function that an emergency manager could serve. Training, pretty straightforward, but making sure that all of our staff that would be involved in response are properly trained, so we know who's on first in the, in the event of an emergency. This is a critical aspect of emergency management, is the idea of community preparedness, and not just for the city and making sure the government can provide services in the event of an emergency, but also provide outreach and education to the community and to businesses for different types of emergencies. I will say that while Rappel County could provide and does provide some of this, one of the greatest assets to having an in-house emergency manager, management program, is this activity, Englewood-specific focused, community preparedness. We can do some of this, and I think what you've heard from the folks at the table is that we each have our own lanes that we try to embed emergency management within, but we can only take a piece of it, and if something were to happen, we can only cover it from the IT perspective in one way. Communications is certainly involved in one way, and obviously, police depending on the incident, but each of us has a role to play in that, and emergency management helps make sure that it's all tied together, and that emergency manager is making sure that everybody's prepared to respond in the right way, so that we're not crossing wires or making the situation worse. And I did want to point out that only half of citizens did rate our preparedness as excellent or good, so at least the community knows we're maybe not talking about it as much as we should. Really briefly on some of our historical challenges as a city, the function was previously under Englewood Fire Department. As we went to Denver Fire, those jobs, job duties were absorbed within the police department, but they were added to other job duties, we didn't have a specific emergency manager. As you might imagine, with your normal day-to-day jobs, it just becomes less of a priority, and so that's where we've seen some of the vulnerability to disruption. And that vulnerability, as we saw in our latest cyber incident, potentially increases the cost, and then the impact on the community if it were to be a larger incident. So, two options for you to consider this evening. The first, and we've had discussions with Rappel County about this before, to enter into a formal agreement with Rappel County, where Rappel County would serve as our emergency manager. We'd have a person designated as the emergency manager, and for a fee, we, an annual fee, we would receive service from that, from the county, and they would provide training and review our plans with us, they would do some functions out in the community. We would have less local control over an emergency. So, in that event, given that Rappel County would be our primary, most situations, our plans would likely say, we're going to immediately declare an emergency, and Rappel County's in charge. Now, that's not to say that we each don't have a role to play in that response, but the point being is, you get what you pay for in terms of the agreement. So, that is an option, we cover our bases, so to speak, we get the expertise, they've done this in a number of other communities. We also have that direct line in, and maybe perhaps a quicker line in to potential funding in the event of a larger emergency, where we'd have to go through the county, and then the state, and to the federal level.
And a very good example of that was the high-rise senior fire that Littleton had two years ago. In that case, Littleton was overwhelmed very early on in that incident, and Rappel County came in within the first day or two, and totally took over managing that incident. And they're certainly willing to do that for us, but we don't have the robust program that we could provide if we go that direction.
And lastly, option two is to have an in-house emergency manager. Provided, our Human Resources Department did an analysis on what the salary may be, impact is in that $70,000 to $100,000 range. The advantage is that we are able to design our own program, that we have control over incidents as they occur. We always will have the county and then the state as kind of our backups in the event of a larger emergency, but we do have that ability to design our own program, and we have that asset, not only in-house, but for the community in preparing for various different events. This is an ongoing cost as well, obviously, that does not include benefits, so it's a little bit greater impact in terms of the budget, but again, you get what you pay for. So, with that, I'll close, unless I've missed anything you all would like to add. Basically, we'd like your guidance on one of those two options, and just get a sense of where you're at before we bring anything formally forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take questions. Councilmember Martinez.
I'm really glad this is coming forward tonight, this is something that keeps me up. I know we have a really big gap in this area, and we really need to fill this critical role, we don't have one, and the cyber attack recently brought it to the forefront in my mind most recently, and that could have been a lot worse, our team did great, you know, but like you said, in Atlanta, they were down for like five days, that's a major, major deal, and it's always been on my mind more of kind of environmental, like flooding, or snowstorms, or it could go on and on and on. I prefer option number two on this, only so that we have more control, and my only concern, I think, with doing it with the Rappel County, I think they would probably be great, but if there is a county-wide emergency, we would have to split that resource with everyone else who is in Rappel County, so I would prefer option two.
Other thoughts? Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Olson.
Yeah, thank you, I have a couple of questions, I probably should have asked them along the way, but what are some of the current triggers for, that's a bad use of the word, but, for departments to actually keep up a continuity plan? Is there a renewing kind of request from you or others that, that, and I'm sure for wastewater and water in general, they have some statewide?
I've attempted to work with Carrie Bush, who was in, she was in finance, and I think now she's in HR, and Carrie Bush is what they call a power user with this COOP software, and we tried to put together groups from each department, get each department director to have buy-in, to have a person to start updating, and we, I mean, we made good progress with getting the plans updated, but you still don't have the total buy-in from the department directors, and I think if you had a manager that was directly under Mr. Keck, he would have a lot more horsepower with getting people motivated to buy into this and keep things current, and you'd also have somebody that had the time to go through all the different plans to make sure they were current.
There's an aspect of training, too. You know, one of the things that the cyber incident opened our eyes to is, well, you say, okay, you have to prioritize and understand what services in your department have to come back online first. It's like, well, I don't think we really have critical needs in my area. Well, all your systems go down internally, and then you realize, oh, man, if this, if this particular system isn't up, then our fire marshal doesn't have location services to be able to continue to do inspections. I didn't think about that. So, I think it's, we can create an internal staff team and mandate that you update plans, but if we're not training our staff on some of those aspects, then it's tough to put together an accurate plan.
So, I have a few other questions. I'm thinking there might be a third possible plan, too. You've given us two here, but there could be a third. But I also have some other questions. When we had it done under the fire department, who was doing it? Was it?
We had a contract, contract person who was paid for by the Colorado Department of Homeland Security.
That's what I thought. So, it wasn't even paid for out of our department, so we've always done this with some other kind of help, and so, which then leads me to wondering what's out there for us, and what other cities of this size, what are they doing? I'm not really excited about going to the county only, but a city of our size is sandwiched in between others, so we all will have to work together if it's massive beyond, but if there's a shooting that's specific or something, and obviously, it's just us dealing with it, but I'm concerned about who, what kind of person, how we fund it, and then secondly, what are their qualifications for such breadth? I mean, it's one thing to have a shooting versus a fire thing versus cyber, and how it is one person?
Well, first of all, as far as, I attend the monthly UASI meetings.
Oh, you do, okay, you're the person right now, then?
I, well, I take on part of it.
Sort of.
And I attend those meetings to keep up the city's status with that governing board, so that I'm a voting member. The funding stream that was used in the past is drying up, those federal funds are going away, they're getting much more difficult to get. There was some concern in the past with how the fire department grants were working, and so I don't think that that grant process is a reliable funding stream for it at this time. I don't think, I think there's a misconception here about what the emergency manager actually is. He's more of the orchestra conductor, I mean, he doesn't know the law enforcement piece of an active shooter. He doesn't know, you know, the logistics of getting the snow plows out and stuff, but he's the guy that gets everybody together and coordinates all the information and makes everything flow, and then he provides the information to the decision-makers, to Mr. Keck and you, he's kind of that conduit of information. So, he's not, he's not an expert in
In anyone.
In law enforcement. He is an expert in the national incident management system, and also in the incident command system. So, as far as the structure of how the EOC is organized, how you have people staffing those different positions, that's his bailiwick, and he's not an expert in all the areas.
That was my sense about it, but I wasn't even sure, like, what are the job qualifications for someone like that, and whether it needs to be a full-time position or not? There is no doubt in my mind that we need this, and it needs to be really clear, we're, I mean, the statements we've already made about, about we're sort of waiting here for something to happen, and we could, we could lose out on a lot of things for our city to have to deal with this, not have, be ready for it, and lawsuits, and unfortunate people, you know, getting hurt, so, but I'm just trying to figure out what are some of the norms around the metro area of other cities and what they're doing, and sort of if there's some trends in making this work within a current position, that's similar, and maybe it's a hybrid, I don't know if there's a third way or not.
Well, currently, the city of Sheridan, their police chief does it. Mark Campbell was the deputy, or was the undersheriff, he got his certification as an emergency manager, he took it with him, he's still certified, and he does it for the city of Sheridan. Cherry Hills is under Rappel County, city of Centennial, contracts with Rappel County. Littleton, they used to have an emergency manager, and from what I've been they used to have an emergency manager, and from what I've been told, I believe they're going with South Metro Fire.
So, do we have any other like cities that have hired a full-time person to do this?
Brighton was actually the same size of city and residents, and they had a full-time person doing emergency management.
They still do, too?
They still do, yes. And their, the salary, because you had Fire, that was actually a separate entity, and then you had the city operations. So, Fire and PD actually pitched in to pay, and they saw the need to have a full-time person. And it's very effective because we had a, there was a, the snowstorm, and this is when it was identified, it closed the city down for three days, where, you know, the documents, and, you know, the getting reimbursement back from FEMA wasn't properly there, and the training wasn't properly there because nobody knew what to do. And the emergency manager took that on after the fact and was able to train everybody and then come up with a plan, come up with the COOP plans, get people on board, and do an annual training, practice it. So, when there is an emergency, it's not, it's not like it was in the snowstorm where you didn't know. You do know. And that's some of the biggest challenges.
Thank you. One of the last things I wanted to say is, you all did just an unbelievable job with the ransomware. I've had a couple of people ask me, "Did your city really go through this?" I'm like, "Yes, we did." I really think what you pulled together and made it work is pretty tremendous. I wouldn't want to have to go through that again without someone having some, it could have been way, way worse.
Could have. It could have, and I think our systems didn't help us, but the talent on our IT team prevented us from being down a lot longer. So, credit to them, but it opened our eyes in a number of different areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
You don't have to answer this now, but before I can kind of wrap my head around which of these choices would be best, I would need to, like Councilmember Olson said, we've always done this with other help. So, there's been funding and some money and contracts or agreements or whatever. I would need to know what those were and what funding there was, what currently we're doing, and what funding we're putting towards that, that we would be able to pull that's already been dedicated to that. And does the, for the city attorney, I would need to know, what does the charter say about any emergencies or who, how that happens and goes into place? If we could just have this all together so that we could, who's in charge and whatever. I think I've noticed somewhere in the charter where it says the mayor does some and the city manager. So, how that would fit in with any kind of plan we would do and whether any of that would need to be done by ordinance if we did, changed any of that for, and then the current funding, then where any additional money would come from, whether that would be coming from any of the respective departments, whether it would be new funding. I think Councilmember Olson asked a wonderful question. This seems to be a little bit of a newer thing, kind of piecemeal together by each of the municipalities for what they thought they needed at the time. And at least whoever there is in Littleton, they'll have their job regardless of how the vote goes until January 1st, because it's not, can't even do it before then. But, you know, how each of them have done it and how it looks and whatever, anybody's been being paid, you know, what the, if they have a standalone person doing this, what that kind of salaries look like and job duties and qualifications, so that we can at least see kind of what that was. And then part of this is knowing who's who. Where's Margaret?
She's on vacation currently.
Okay. So, one of the concerns that I've had from staff and for myself, I have to agree with them, is that we've got people coming in and out of positions in this, in the city, and nobody's being notified. I mean, they don't know who's who. Like, I didn't, I go, "Oh, you've been here for a month." So, we have to have some kind of communication piece where we know when people are leaving a position. I mean, we certainly have had unfortunate incidences where people who were ex-employees, I mean, so if people don't know that somebody has left or retired or left a position and is no longer in that, and then somebody new, I would hate to see somebody walking around the building, trying to boss people around, and nobody knows who the hell they are to be bossing them around. So, if we have some kind of a systematic communication method so that we know when people leave, as respectfully as that can be done for whatever reason, but especially in higher positions where somebody might have authority over anybody, and then both for council and for the staff that they know who the new people are and who's coming in so that we have some stream of communication, I think that would be helpful. And that's when I thought it was, just wasn't paying attention enough, but I have had some complaints from some employees that it just, they're not being told. And if an emergency were to happen, everybody needs to know who everybody is. I think that would be very important. So...
We can certainly provide that information to council. I will say that we provide that information to staff when we do have new hires and departures that are appropriate for us to share.
Apparently, it's missing some people, so I'm just sharing that with you. So, I mean, I would hate to see somebody be put in an awkward position
Yep.
because they think somebody's not, they don't know who somebody is.
Thank you for that information.
Or me. I don't want to be put in awkward
Yes.
Thank you. And if you'd put that together, it would really help me decide which ones we would. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. By 2050, 75% of the global population are expected to live in cities. Because of the collision of globalization, urbanization, and climate change, not a week goes by that there is not a disruption to a city somewhere in the world: colon, a cyber attack, a natural disaster, or economic or social upheaval. Meanwhile, cities face acute stresses such as poverty, endemic crime and violence, or failing infrastructure, all of which weaken a city over time. So, this is just a snippet from the Rockefeller Foundation, Foundation of Experts Working to Improve the Well-being of Humanity All Over the World, which includes the US. A snippet from their, the portion of their website on resilient cities. In 2013, they started this initiative to support cities to become resilient and be able to brace themselves against these acute issues that come up, as we've been discussing, one of them being cyber attacks certainly, and their day-to-day difficulties. And Boulder, as a matter of fact, is one of the cities. So, they had a pilot group, or their first cohort of thirty-something cities. I think they're at their 100 cities now. But anyway, one of their top, just a matter of interest, one of the top initiatives they undergo with cities is providing financial and logistic guidance for establishing an innovative new position in city government, a chief resilience officer, which is what we're calling in this emergency management person, who will lead the city's resilience efforts. And one of the other pieces that's critical to their implementation of these programs across cities in the United States and worldwide is that the cities become involved in a network. This networking piece is pretty crucial, a network of member cities who can learn from and help one another. So, when I saw the two options, I started reading this way back in August after I saw the hurricane in Houston. I was running my happy campaign, and then I saw a city council member sitting on TV talking about what they were going to do for the city, and I almost had a heart attack. I thought, "Oh, my gosh. I mean, what are you going to do if something happens in Englewood?" So, I've been reading this, signed up for all kinds of e-newsletters. So, that's why I'm referencing it particularly tonight. So, I saw the two options we have, defer to Arapahoe County on a larger level or hire this individual. My thought, too, would be, my preference would be to have a dedicated officer. One of the reasons is, and you mentioned it, Mr. Wolf, early on in your discussion tonight, for the support that that person can give in terms of community building and helping prepare our community. I think preparing the individuals in this building and those of us who work in this building in some capacity is one piece of it, but the people in the group called Englewood and Arapahoe, nearest to us, in Denver even, I mean, how do we work with them and prepare them to be safe? It's not just about us, right? And it's getting the message out. So, I like the ability of that individual to have more time to work strategies into the community, not just into our municipal government. And there's more, but I think I would go for options here.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. It sounds like council needs more information. But if we were to have given you a recommendation tonight, when would you be looking to engage in either the contract with Arapahoe County or look to hire the emergency manager?
ASAP. You know, I don't want to say, you know, "What if?" No, that's a bad way to put it, but the point being is that if we're not prepared, we're not prepared. So, that's why we wanted to get a sense of where council was at this evening, so that if there was consensus, we would bring forward the, one of the two options for funding, either a contract to a regular business meeting or supplemental appropriation or a budget transfer. However, we would do that internally.
Has Arapahoe County presented us with this contract yet?
We do have a scope of work that we worked with them on about, oh, eighteen months ago?
A year.
A year ago. So, we have an idea on scope and cost, but we'd have to go back to them and update that before we bring that forward.
Could we see that? And I understand it's not entirely fresh, but I think that might not hurt informing me a bit as well. And I, this is as critical as it gets, I think. So, as much as I am very cost-conscious, or certainly try to be, that probably wouldn't be my first priority here. It would be whichever one turns out to be the best fit for the city. I agree, I like the dedicated person, or if everything goes haywire in Arapahoe County, our dedicated person from Arapahoe County might get spread thin. I would like kind of some of the additional information asked for by the other council members, but I'm probably going to make cost a secondary matter in this particular decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Just take a minute?
Eight seconds.
Okay, all right.
Literally.
Councilmember Wink?
The cost-benefit analysis of this person's salary versus what can happen if we don't have an orchestrated effort is astronomical in favor of the cost of the salary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And in, I want to weigh in on this also. I do believe it is very important for us to have this. Arapahoe County isn't going to just take over and manage for us. If we contract with them, they are going to be training our personnel how to do it. And so, I'm certain that if that's the way that we decided to go, that we would have somebody in the city that would probably take that role of doing it, but we would get training from Arapahoe County. Is that, is that correct?
So, somebody, depending on the nature of the event, somebody would be designated the incident commander. That's different than the emergency manager. But if we declared an emergency, we would designate the Arapahoe County person who would be our designated emergency manager. So, now, we wouldn't always have to declare an emergency. We could deal with the incident. But if, most likely, it would be at the discretion of the city manager and the mayor, when an emergency was called, that emergency manager at Arapahoe County would be in charge.
I think that Councilmember Berentine and Councilmember Olson brought up some really good questions, as well as Councilmember Questa. I do think that we need a plan. I mean, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about something totally different. My husband was a postal employee for 44 years. There were human incidences that occurred at the post office. And I just want to make sure that we have plans, that people know what to do. And those are things that we can do without somebody in this position. And I think the fact that this has been brought to our attention, I do think that it is something that we need to work on. But I'm not ready to go ahead and, at this point, and say, "We need a person." We do need somebody, but as far as hiring another person, I think the questions that have been asked need to be answered. Where's the funding coming from? And things like that. Councilmember Berentine?
I just have one quick question to add. If we have our own dedicated person, it occurs to me that we probably would still need some kind of IGA with Arapahoe County, and maybe even there would still be some cost associated with that. If we have a person from Arapahoe County, we have that coordination piece is probably already going to be happening. So, I need to know if there, if we have our own dedicated person, what that cost of that collaboration would be if we had to pony up, if you'd just find out for me.
We don't have to have, right now, the state requires that each county have an emergency manager. And right now, the emergency manager for Arapahoe County is the sheriff. And the state does not require anything of municipalities, but it allows a municipality to have their own emergency manager if they choose to do so.
No, I understand. Well, my question is, is if we have a dedicated person, what I want to be able to make sure is that we have that collaborative effort. And in that collaborative effort, would we have to designate that we're working with somebody in Arapahoe County? And if we are, does it require an IGA? And would there be any additional funding for that that would be required? If you could find out for me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and I believe that City Manager Keck would like to share.
We would, you're correct, Councilmember. We would require an IGA. They would require an IGA with us that stipulates levels of service and funding and who, it would default, as the commander has mentioned, to state statutes with respect to responsibilities if, in fact, we had a, an actual emergency. But you're absolutely right. We would need to have that enunciated very clearly in an IGA.
And I just need, so if you'll bring that back with that information, and if it's, and if it would potentially cost anything additional, to make sure, because Arapahoe County may be looking to finance their person as well, if we need them to do the collaborative effort. So, I just want to know the answer. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I would like to know what kind of a timeline we should work on. I work in a setting where every single day, I'm thinking about this stuff. And I know you all have had enough incidents here
Yeah.
where it's come up to you as well. I mean, it's just part of the nature of your work. There's not, I do not want to slow this down at all by suggesting that there might be a third way. I just want to get a little bit more information, and I would spend way more money than this probably if we knew what's going to work well, what's going to position Englewood well, what are some of the best practices, practices that we can learn from some other communities our size that are first-tier cities and most likely to get into some of these things as well. Although, small towns have to deal with some of this as well. I would just like to know a little bit more of how we interface with the collaborative environment that we need to be in for cross-county, cross-city kind of things. I think this helps to know what the IGA process is. But I would like to see us expedite this for you, so we're not hanging with this either. So, I'm not, I don't want to slow this down. I just think it would be helpful to know exactly what we're doing, because we are going to have to make choices along the way. No one wants to make a choice for safety under other things, though.
Right. I mean, in terms of, again, in terms of timing, I mean, we agree. We'd like to move it forward in some way. I suppose what probably with looking over across the table to Manager Keck, is we wouldn't want to bring forward any type of, you know, budget transfer item at regular session if we didn't have clarity first. So, I guess the question is, does the council want another study session item on this with the additional information, or do you just want the additional information in advance and we can bring it up under city manager choice at a future meeting? That's the type of feedback we'd like to know, what the next step should be.
I'd like to see it put on another study session. I mean, I think we could do it fairly quickly if we could get the answers to this.
Okay, Councilmember Olson?
For fifteen minutes.
I was going to say that I would love to see it in two weeks from now
Okay.
and expedite it to the top if this is really, and in the meantime, you're the point person. Is that what we're saying?
We have a nice team.
We have a nice team here. Once we've talked about it publicly, we've got to make sure we do know what we're talking about right now. And so, I want to make sure everybody knows what's going to happen in the meantime, if we are going to go in this direction of hiring someone or doing the county. And let's see, I have another question. I don't mind reading stuff either. If, Councilmember Wink, if you have a site that you think's adding content to things that's helped you, and you're thinking about it, I'd love to see the site, too. And anything else you've all been looking at. I don't know if the innovation...
Alliance for Innovation.
Alliance for Innovation. I want to call it Innovation for Alliance, something. I don't know. But if they have some things there that are helpful, that might be useful to as well.
Thank you. I do think it would be a good idea to bring it forward. I do think it would be a good idea to bring it forward in two weeks for a study session, again. And, you know, I do want to give the IT department kudos for how well things went down. And I know that, the truth is, we have brought forward already some things to protect us in the future, and so we have been planning in that area. And the fact that our IT director happened to be gone when it happened, so. So anyway.
She was playing emergency management and coordinating all the other resources from Washington, I think, right?
Yep. She did a beautiful job of giving us the options of what happened, yes.
Right. At a cybersecurity conference, right.
Absolutely, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll bring this right back.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
That'll be great. We will take a break. We're running a little behind, so.
Still ten-minute break?
About, yep, ten minutes.
I'm on time. Steve Green.
Steve Green, yeah. He was, he was, he was the, he was in charge of the paramedics, and they gave that to him, and nothing actually happened. So this woman, we had a grant named Rose, I can't remember her last name, but she lives in Cherry Hills Village, actually ran for village trustees a few years back. She was our grant emergency management person. And she wrote a lot for us, but the problem was, it was a nuts, didn't feel like she had the authority to do that. She had the fire chief, but it had Sandy Marsh. And then she, we moved to the police department and the fire department.
Oh, this is starting to come back to me.
Exactly, yes. So the police department got kind of takes off, and it kind of decayed to the point where we're like, all right. And then the grant gave up, ran out.
I thought there was a grant.
We actually went to...
I wanted to ask you that.
Yeah, we actually went to DHS and said, hey, can we get a grant again? They said, we're not offering this one to someone.
No.
Yeah, so, funding dried up.
Yeah. And have been my...
Yeah. Yeah, Rose, I can't remember her last name, but it was interesting. But, yeah, it didn't work out.
It didn't work, yeah. Oh, okay.
I wish we had a person internally that...
Oh, wait, I'm sure we could. Just give us a moment. I'll try, I just... I'm sure Chris typically is really...
General, I'm sure.
Yeah, but I'll check it.
Our general.
Oh, no, no, I'll check, I'll check.
And I thought, well, if it's gone, it's gone.
No, you're a good man, you're a pretty good man.
I remember when I was a kid, I sat and watched House Traders going on.
Oh, I'm bringing it over camera.
Total building, city just collapsed. So when it flooded, guess what? It hit the city hard.
Well.
In fact, it didn't, in that.
Take care of it. Let it get lost. Yes, okay. Yep. I'll email it. Thank you very much.
Again, I don't, I'm not, I don't know this person. I know that they were talking about contacting the city.
Okay.
And that they contacted you and they hadn't heard back. Just one going up, but they were contacting.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Call them up.
Your honor, sir.
Yeah. You can ask what it was called.
Yeah.
It will be a lay-in, she way better than me.
And so my daughter, I don't know what her name is. Anyway, just let you know. What do you think, appreciate you, because mom, and I said, okay, I said, nobody's going to pay, we'll just pray. I said, if you hear from dad, we'll call you. We did not hear from him till almost noon, and that was like seven in the morning. Ooh, because they grabbed him, and they said, hey, you know who's supposed to be going in and out here. How many people in that building?
That's how I started, that was the middle of the night.
Oh, yeah, it's a million square foot building.
I don't think they had a plan either, did they?
Oh, they had a plan, but, thing is, a plan's a plan, but you've got to follow it. The people went in there that were like in a registry cage.
That felt safe.
Because they're locked in a cage. Give me a break, shoot right through a wired cage. So anyways.
It was, it was...
No, just well.
Nancy just does her stuff for therapy, just on her arm without even going through.
But, yeah, just send it to...
Nine o'clock at night, yeah.
Just give them, and you can just see, you know. Sorry. She's like a scientist over there. Yeah, I know, I know, we were kind of, so I had to pick it up a little bit.
But it was kind of interesting, because we had the supervisor just sitting on here, not shutting it down. I mean, you name it, we were doing it, you know? But I had him in, getting this.
Someone in your plan?
Shut it down, lock it down, you know?
Hello? How are you, Mayor Protem?
Pretty good, and you?
Yeah, not too bad at all. How was Easter?
Very nice, how about yours?
Uh, not at all. I think Easter's the new Halloween, in terms of candy. My kids...
So did you go to the park?
We went to the park Saturday, and then the following weekend was, of course, the actual holiday. And there were a couple of different families that had Easter egg hunts that we went to. But we just had so much candy by the end. I actually took a bunch in at work, since other people would eat it, we didn't have around our house. But it was good. How about you? The grandkids going to Easter egg hunts?
We didn't see them on Easter, so I'm sure they do.
You've got to assume so, right?
Well, at least they do at home.
Gotcha, that's...
They have a pretty big family, a lot of cousins and stuff.
Sure, that's fun.
So, it's already right.
Yeah, that is fun. It's, I was pulling away, I was candy there, it was by the time, so, but, so, okay.
So does some of it disagree? I mean, so, your children go out?
Yeah, I took tons to work, just getting them around. And the other thing is, all of it, I don't need a lot of it, but it's like loose M and N, you can use a lot, so you don't have to go all pack, you can just take like a few, which is the worst habit of the brain, but just singles available. But, yeah, so, a lot went to. Same with Halloween. It's a lot of them, for that same purpose.
Exactly. And, she had such severe allergies.
Oh, sure.
I had to go get a special heart candy for her, because she couldn't...
Poor thing. Maybe it's a blessing in disguise.
Yeah, it probably was. I think she was making it to...
Is that carried over to her, though?
Yeah. How are you?
Oh, wow, it's good to see you. Good to see you. And my friend and I, we were eating at the old one, we met tonight, Saturday. Too big. Southern burritos. But that, I was...
There you go.
This is, we're leaving about ten minutes ago.
I thought, that was pretty cool.
Something close.
Okay, that's fun. I told, I told Rita that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Perfect.
So I just wanted, did you get my message?
It was a pleasure, it was a pleasure meeting you in person.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So, I great, I thought, hmm, why do they offer me that? Okay? And I saw, I haven't been to that yet, so.
Yeah, and I, and I saw a rep here, so I walked out to see.
I got to do my write-up from that meeting.
Yes, I did, I did talk to Alex. Talk with...
Julie McMorris, I think, yeah.
About getting connected and talking about things. Not sure we can do the whole newsletter thing, but we'll do what we can.
But at least if we have a spot for them in there, like we have other, it just has to be like the council goals thing, but, just so they have an option if they want a little something in there.
Right.
One of the women I told...
I have a three-year-old and a six-year-old. Yes, two girls. And your cell?
Zoe is thirteen.
Thirteen-year-old boy?
Girl.
Excuse me, I don't know, that's good. I, you know, it could go either way. I saw a study, it was in the past three, four months, I'd say. And I don't know if you really have a gender preference, but that, for the, one of the first times I saw you, I think it was first time having a daughter, then a son, for one or the other presentation. And, I don't know, just, boys are in a weird stage, I think, in society right now. They're volatile. But it was awesome, I'm so glad I have two girls, two girls. So how many, girl, I hear like enjoy it now, because once they hit their game, it gets a little bit more colorful. And, what's her name, sweetie?
Thank you.
Yeah, my daughter's December sixth, too, and so she's, yes, did that her whole life. She's a little bit on the...
Good evening.
Chickened chairs, musical chairs.
Yes. So, we'll call this, we'll call this meeting back to order. If you'll take your seat. We are combining Agenda Item five and six.
We are, Mayor. Thank you for your indulgence on that. These two are really tied together, or at least we're trying to tie them together. So as we move forward here with strategy, which, again, your strategy session is now scheduled for Saturday, May fifth. Mr. Wolf and I have now three names, and we've been in contact with some potential facilitators, and we're wading through their curriculum vitae's to see if, in fact, they will be a good fit for your session on that day. We'll definitely have a facilitator for that event, but for the purposes of tonight, as we're talking about the budget once again, we're going very low-tech, because we believe in the power of communication, and specifically, hearing from you and gaining some direction on some very important policy-level discussions and policy-level questions that the council must answer to help us to formulate the 2019 budget. And so as we do that, we want to take sure, take stock and look at, through the lens of what the work that you've already done. And specifically, what work has already been done by the city council in identifying the themes that you've identified, and then had those validated through the public meetings that you held with the two public meetings on strategy. And then layered on top of that, even more so, are the results of the citizen survey. And hopefully, you're all beginning to see a thread that is running through the community goals that you have, the council strategy, and the survey results for areas upon which we can begin to focus more like a laser rather than a shotgun, with our pellets hitting the target, all of them, instead of just a few, with the way we're going to be budgeting here in 2019. And so having said that, as I said in my memorandum to you, tonight, we want to look at several of those themes, and specifically, again, those are number one, and these kind of are in order of importance, right? Financial sustainability, I'd probably move strong infrastructure, community parks ahead of historic past, smart future. Sorry, Doug, we want to honor the past, but, and want to have a smart future, but it's important that we address our infrastructure. Fourth, we have safe, fun, and engaged community, and then organizational excellence. And so you might ask, well, what falls underneath all of those? And how do we know what falls underneath that? Well, financial or fiscal sustainability is really clear, and that is making sure that we're not spending more than we're taking in, or we're not exhausting our reserves or resources too quickly, to the point where, again, we're not going to have the statutorily required seventeen percent, or sixteen point seven percent of a reserve, which you adopted by resolution in 2016, to set a floor or threshold for the type of reserves that we should have. So that's pretty clear. Strong infrastructure, we have infrastructure in our community, obviously. At this point in time, I'm cautioning against building new infrastructure, because we need to make sure that we have funding to maintain what we have. And so, as such, the preponderance of the infrastructure that we have that seemingly shows up on our CIPs relates to parks and recreation, our parks facilities, both the Malle Center, the ERC, and the various parks that we have. And we've been trying to address those on an annual basis, and we've been very successful. I'm thankful to our staff, who's been very aggressive about going after Arapahoe County open space funding, as well as Great Outdoors Colorado or GOCO grants to help us with parks. As you're aware, we're going to be completing some of the work that began last summer at Rotolo Park. Shelter is nearing completion now, the roof is on, the steel's going up on the roof. So that'll be complete, and we're going to pivot and begin to move into recreation of Jason Park, because that playground equipment is rather aged. And so, again, method, with a intentionality and methodically, we're going to be addressing those parks' infrastructure as we can, as there's available funding. So that, that's the infrastructure piece, and that includes all of our roads as well, and how we're going to maintain those and ensure that that's taken care of. We heard a lot about organizational excellence during your strategy sessions, and specifically, customer service kept coming up. You know what? We want to make sure that we have exceptional service, and I agree with that. And we've actually identified that as one of our internal goals this year with staff as part of what we call the Inglewood Five, where we have five areas of concentration. And so that's one of our areas of concentration this year, too. As a city, we don't sell anything, other than, and all we have is our service. So if we're not doing a good job providing service to those who do business with us, to our residents, to those who wish to invest here, then there's competition, and people will go elsewhere, and we recognize that. So that's organizational excellence. Under safe, fun, active, engaged, all of those are pretty clear as well. Safe, from the standpoint of public safety, public safety is extremely important in our community. That was reaffirmed again with the National Citizen Survey results, where I know the police have, are trying to figure out how they can come up with an extra seven percent of likes in the community, if you will, with respect to the survey results, because fire had a higher proportion of likes than, and good and excellent than they did, but still very high. People really want to make sure they're in a safe community. And along with that, too, comes the necessity in which we heard a lot, too, was the aesthetics, you know, a well-organized and developed community that has code enforcement that's done in a way that meets the people's needs. And so, we are hopeful that when we move forward with this particular budget discussion, council will weigh in and give us some policy direction, such as, we've heard, we want more proactive code enforcement. Well, I will say, since I've been here nearly for four years, it seems like every year, every other year, this comes up. When I first got here, it was, we want proactive code enforcement. We implemented proactive code enforcement at the time. And then we heard from the community saying, we don't want proactive code enforcement, because I got a ticket. And council people were getting badgered by people in the community, because they were being held to a standard, like, and homeowners association. But, again, for council to define, what do you mean by proactive code enforcement? We're happy to have that discussion, understand it, put some parameters around it, and come forth with a proposal that may or may, may or may not meet your needs. But, again, as staff, we, again, we want to have this level of collaboration and discussion. But tying, again, back to those themes, those are some things that we've heard thematically from the public, from the sessions that we've had on strategy, from the National Citizen Survey that we want to discuss tonight. So, as you've already seen in the memorandum as well for tonight, there really isn't any particular order, but for Mark and I to have developed strategies or information relating to all these policy-level questions, we probably would have spent months doing so. And so we want to come forth for you tonight and start, and I know the mayor and I had a conversation last week, and so you can see, number one, was how should staff approach the funding of public safety in fiscal year 2019 budget? We threw that out. We want to have a level of discussion tonight that will help to inform staff, so that as we come back in the succeeding sessions that we have planned, which are quite a few, I believe we have another one yet this month, and we're going to do two in May at a minimum, and then there's, needs to have some time for me to go back with my department directors and the budget managers, and create a budget that we bring back in, in response to the council's desires. I did take an opportunity to listen to the meeting that I missed on the twenty-sixth, to listen to specifically the conversations on budget, and appreciate the fact that you've answered some of those questions. Some of them yet are unanswered, but, again, it was a good discussion and a good start to the, to the budget kickoff. But for the purposes of tonight, what we wanted to do was to give Mark a break from talking for a bit and have me lead this, but specifically, again, dig into these policy questions. And the second policy question is dealing with ensuring strong infrastructure. How do we want to do that? We know that on average, we have about six million dollars to address capital projects. So doing the math, the next five years, that's thirty million dollars. We know that we have a seventy-six million dollar... We know that we have a $76 million ga, a $76 million, uh, price tag for all the infrastructure that needs to be done. And, and again, that list is not a wish list, it's a need list, it's a list that's been prioritized to the best of our ability, uh, addressing capital projects. But we need now to understand priorities from you as a council as to where you see us want to camp out, uh, with our budget. Thirdly, we want to again talk about what does preservation of the past and ensuring a smart future look like? We heard some, some folks at the Strategy sessions who had a desire to say what it means to them, uh, from the public, and we respect that, but we also now need to kind of coalesce and have the council give us specific direction for what that looks like. We know from a smart future perspective, um, we've even been hit up by some folks that said that we should join the municipal ban, uh, broadband marketplace and begin to offer municipal broadband to our public who may be underserved or, um, outpriced right now with respect to that. But again, that would be another initiative where we would need some direction, and it has a cost to it. Number four, fiscal sustainability, we've kind of talked about this already, but we need to know, what does it actually mean? What does fiscal sustainability mean to this council? I know it sounds like a ridiculous or a ludicrous question, but financial sustainability means different things in different people. To give you an example, um, a couple of you ran for council this past, this past year and were successful. Um, and one of the narratives we heard was, well, the city should not spend more than it takes in in a given year. Well, that has consequences as well. So we need to understand, if that's your definition of sustainability, then we're going to have to change the way we've op, worked operationally with set-asides and with putting monies aside into a reserve to pay for capital projects. Again, we're open, we want to have that discussion, we want to have that, that narrative with you, but this is like I've said before in previous years in the creation of a budget. This is one of those books that, you know, you read as a child that had the alternative ending. And we need to know which alternative ending you want to see us write the chapter of. And again, we cannot do that without the participation of the City Council, and specifically to understand where you want to see us to go, uh, with the preparation of the budget. So hopefully, there's enough meat here, uh, for you to grab on and, and, and grab this and say, you know what, let's start talking about, um, public safety funding, or, or whatever that might be. And we're here to participate, we're here to also make sure that we have clarity so that we can bring back the necessary information for you to make a more informed decision on how to create this, this next budget. As you've seen from the meeting on the 26th of March, you've been given the five-year forecast of revenues, so you have an understanding from a very conservative standpoint of where revenues are headed and what we might have to have in its totality for the creation of the fiscal year 19 budget. But we might, we're going to have to get a lot more granular than just looking at saying, hey, in, in 2019, it looks like we're going to have about $47 million to apply to both operations and capital. Uh, we need to get more specific about what does operations look like, are there going to be anything new specifically? Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up tonight is understanding that as of right now, and we had an early discussion this evening about how to fund an emergency manager's position, funding is very tight. And, and it's, and it's getting tighter because we've pulled out pretty much all the rabbits out of the hat that we can, um, for the most part. Some of them were difficult. One of those major policy questions was answered by a couple councils ago with the move to, uh, outsource our fires, fire service. For what everyone might say, one way or the other, um, you know, having that local control or the tradition of having a 107-year-old fire department, fact of the matter is that move saved the city $3.5 million that first year, and it's three percent, 2% less that next year than 3% less each year, but that money is actually helping to be able to fund capital projects and operations today. But we can't continue to do that, obviously. We don't want to outsource ourselves and, and turn in, turn into a centennial necessarily, but we have to be very mindful of looking at options for the delivery of services, whether it's through a public-public partnership, public-private partnership, those types of things are on the table. And, and I joke to my staff, um, I know it's required in the charter, but I said, listen, you know, everything's on the table, including my job. If, if in fact the city council decides that we don't really need a city manager, what we need is something else to help, you know, get the funding done, then that's what we have to do, and that's what staff is committed to doing with the preparation of this budget. So understand that we are open-minded, we want to have a dialogue with you again on these policy-level deci, decisions and discussions that need to be made to help again inform what, what the budget's going to look like moving ahead. Did I miss anything, Mark?
No, I, I think I'll just add that we want to continue this discussion because there are so many large policy questions, and obviously, you won't solve all of them this evening, but we have to know kind of where your mind's at, so, so we know what topics to bring back, back. What information, uh, do you need over the next few study sessions so that we be, we can begin planning for, for that budget? We're still planning on having our, our, our budget teams, our, our staff teams come and present, uh, by area to get a, so you have an understanding of some of the things that we're planning for the 2019 budget. But before that, and in continuing this effort of collaboration and developing that budget far before the September date where, where the city manager is, is on the hook for producing the budget, we want to know where your mind's at, so there's no surprises, especially as it relates to these larger policy issues. So if nothing else, I think what we'd like to get tonight, uh, out of tonight is an understanding of if there are options, uh, policy issues within this document that, that this group wants to, to seriously consider or learn more about, that those are identified and we're, we're able to, to bring those back over the next several weeks so that we have some, some time to, to build that into, to the planning for, for the budget. I, I will say on the Strategy items, some of the definitions on, on the questions that, that Eric's identified, uh, will be as a part of that, that retreat in saying, what does fiscal sustainability mean? What, what does, uh, organizational excellence actually mean? Uh, that, that is part of the exercise, but again, it's not too early to have that, that discussion, and, and the better we're able to tee up that retreat, I think the more productive it, it can be.
So you're not necessarily asking then for us to necessarily answer these questions tonight, like the one on fiscal sustainability?
Right. That's, that's more of a longer-term question, but I believe there are other questions on this sheet that, that, or this memorandum to the council, that you can an, begin to, to answer this evening. Specifically, uh, again, a, as we're talking, we were talking about public safety last week. Um, you know, we now have the ability to do things that we couldn't do as readily or as quickly before with respect to calculating some what-if scenarios. So what if council decided like last year, hey, we want to, we want to add four more police officers? Well, Ms. Winkle has the opportunity within the ERP system now to say, four officers, and it spits out the number and tells you what your budget, your budget ramifications are almost immediately. So we do have some additional tools this year that we didn't have previously. We had to go back and do some, uh, stuff on Excel, but now the ERP has some, some tie-ins that, that helps us with the creation of a budget. So we can answer some of those questions, uh, and can do some of those what-if scenarios for you, but, uh, again, we want to make this the most meaningful time possible with you as a council, but we need to begin to answer some of these questions as we move forward.
Okay, so I, then let's, let's start with question number one, and, and I do have a question. I don't remember if we talked about this at the Mayor and Manager Meeting, but I, I heard at the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, um, someone that is involved in, um, the Citizens Academy with the Police Department, that they heard that we are down officers again, that we are short officers. Did we have this discussion?
We did not have this discussion.
And I may have, the Budget Advisory Committee may have been after that, or I may have forgotten.
Okay.
So if we're, and also that we are no longer paying the Police Academy? I mean, didn't we provide, isn't that where we're, we're getting some people from?
Volun, you mean volunteers?
Well, not necess, it wasn't volunteers.
Paying for them to go through.
Future hires or, um?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paying for them to go through.
Okay, I was thinking, you said Citizens Academy, so I'm thinking, we don't pay people citizens to go through.
I had that same.
I now want my husband, so she's made it clear.
No, sorry. Yeah, no, the, the Police Academy, that's correct. Again, mainly because we've been very, very fortunate as of late to actually find people who can do lateral transfers. Um, we, we've been fortunate to be able to hire some, some folks laterally. That's maybe euphemism from stealing from our neighbors. Um, we, we have been successful yet again with, with filling vacancies that we've had. I think, uh, we hired another Bavarian police officer who came from Cherry Hills Village, so we thank Cherry Hills Village for, for training them. Um, I don't want to make light of that, but it's fortunate for us when we have that, rather than having to send a, a person who's, who is, has no other experience other than life experience through the Police Academy. It is best when we are able to, to get somebody who's been trained already and then can come in and has a rudimentary understanding and some experience of, of law enforcement to come in and, and work for and with us. I'll tell you, the one verity of life or the truth of life is that there are always going to be somebody at the Police Department who's out. It's just the nature of the business, um, whether it's some sort of injury that was sustained while on the job or just a very physically demanding job. So it is true that there are always going to be, uh, some sort of, some officer who's off on, uh, some sort of medical or light, light, assigned to light duty. As for being down right now, I just talked to the Chief earlier today, uh, they're making things work as, as best they can, but there is, there's no dire call for, my gosh, we're, we're down 10 people and we're in, we're in real trouble. What may happen, too, is we have some folks who are going, who have been called up because they're active or inactive reserve now, being activated, uh, wherein we could be in trouble a little bit if both of these individuals have, get called and have orders to go overseas. So that would put us into a bind, but again, these are things that we're constantly, uh, working with and trying to prepare for.
Okay. Um, with that, Councilmember Berentine?
Yeah, because a lot of information can pass before you can ask a question when we're dealing with some of this. When we did the additional, when we revamped the way that we were putting police officers on, is my first question, we provided additional funding in order to make that happen, to put them through school.
Correct.
So when we, so then there would be, when you have that savings, when you do a lateral hire like that, then we need to see that savings come down to the bottom line, rather than being absorbed within the department for something that may be their wish list so that we are adding, like we did this year, not $2 million, but $3.1 to $3.4 million to the capital improvements budget potentially. We haven't finished that discussion yet. So we need to make sure that that's happening. An extra million dollars over 20 years is $20 million extra.
That's, that's right.
Then it's a $50 million shortfall instead of a $70 million shortfall, and then with some other planning, could be, could be a much different scenario, but we have to plan for it. So what I'd like to see is those kind of issues that were discussed because of a need and, uh, problem at the time, and if that doesn't end up being the problem, um, and we bypass that or find another solution to it, that we're, we're really seeing that money come back down to the bottom line of what we're, of, of, uh, what we're doing so that we can say, okay, we saved that money, and then we can have more money to go to the capital improvements.
Let me.
And then the second question for the officers, we know if somebody's in the reserve when we hire them.
Yeah.
So, and we, uh, if we are intending to regularly have two additional officers or four additional officers, and we already know that there's always going to be somebody off or, or, or on the reserve because of who we're hiring, then we can anticipate making sure that we at least have a discussion as a council what we believe the minimum amount of staffing should, should be, where within that, that range we need to be so that we're not put off. Because I, I, I hear the same rhetoric, the same narrative every single year with the Police Department, and there, there obviously is a solution through proper management of this that we can go ahead and get these questions answered and get it resolved so that we're not always in this conversation. So those two.
Yeah, let me clarify one protect, potential misnomer that's been enunciated tonight, and we did put two people through the academy, you paid for that, but that, that was a one-time expense. Those two individuals are now on the street, and, and they're doing, they're doing well. I believe, you said there were salary savings from not having to send people to the academy? Well, when we get a lateral transfer, we're not starting them at a police officer one, we're actually starting them at a, whatever the, the higher level is. So there's no savings there, we're actually paying them more to actually have experience.
So if you can just bring that in as part of the discussion so we can see that?
Yeah, bless you.
Because I know that we put specific funding over a two-year period to go ahead and put, I believe, four officers through, and if we only put two through, and if you're saying that that then transfers into a higher salary, how much more of a higher salary are we, are we paying so that we could see that?
Sure.
Because, um, there was the list that got put out for the Police Department because they were under budget, and, you know, I don't want to see at end of the year, we did some good job on saving some money here and then not letting that fall down to the bottom line. Every single year, we, we, we budget two, two and a half million dollars more, and every year the budget goes up. So we need to decide whether we're, the things that the budget's going up for, and if we do have some savings and we budgeted for things, I, I'd like to see a little bit more of that discussion in, in this piece of it. And that, just identify some of the places like what you just said where there were some additional. That $3.1 million last year that fell down to the bottom line, that, that allows us now to make a decision to put it to capital improvements, came from somewhere. I just want you to identify where it came from so that we can see whether that's going to be something that we're going to see happen again, or whether we can say, we just misbudgeted and we should budget tighter on that, and we should just up the capital improvements budget. That really was not a good place for it. And I think that we'll get our heads around that a little better where, when we see where that money came from. Could be just one-time uses that some of that fell to the bottom, I don't know, but if you could present that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, and I, actually, I think that has been presented with the monthly financial reports, however, we will bring that back.
To a certain extent, I mean, I want to see the whole.
Yeah, the whole picture.
Of last year, because, obviously, in the monthly reports, we, we didn't know until after the month ended, which was just last month.
Information on that, is that, uh, and do you feel like you already have all that information?
Yeah.
To get that?
Absolutely.
Without doing a lot of extra time?
Yeah, that's not.
Because I think it's been pretty clear.
Yeah, that's not going to take a whole lot of our time. Um, I think we've been very clear that, you know, revenues were stronger last year, but spending, we did underspend in, in certain areas, and we'll bring back a, a clearer picture of that.
And see whether we can recreate that, that would be nice.
Yeah.
And I think what in those presentations, our suggestion was for that surplus is instead of projecting that we would have that type of additional revenue year after year, that we, we'd actually recommend the allocation of the one-time surplus as opposed to building in, assuming, you know, a two and a half million dollar surplus year, year over year. We'll, we'll assume some increase, but not that, that large one. So that, that's why we had suggested from a policy perspective.
All right, those are my two for right now.
Appreciate, appreciate those.
Issues she brought up?
Yeah, thank you, we, we'll, we'll get some answers on that.
Okay, are there any more comments, um, on the first question? Councilmember Questa?
Uh, please, going to 1B Personnel Needs, at this point, any additional personnel additions would be difficult to accomplish without additional funding. Uh, you just mentioned in your conversation with Chief Collins that he feels there's inadequate, uh, amount of staff at this point. Would that, uh, potential personnel additions, would those be in any of the departments or just in EPD?
Um, well, again, from, uh, public safety funding, yeah, we're, we're specifically looking at public safety right now. The, the question again was, uh, also related to code enforcement, if we have enough people there. The answer to that question is going to be no, and we, if you're going to want to see us become more, uh, involved with proactive code enforcement, then we would need to, uh, recruit additional individuals to, to fulfill that need. As far as patrol goes, of course, the answer always is, there always takes somebody else if you're willing to give that allocation to them. Uh, but in speaking with the Chief, uh, again, for right now, those needs seem to be satisfactory.
Code enforcement, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Berentine.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? On anything to do with public safety?
Well, we're going to be discussing this more during that meeting, too, right?
Yes.
Councilmember Martine?
I was going to say, um, I'm assuming the, well, I guess I, I need to ask, is the emergency management, would that be under public safety, the new emergency management position?
I think you've heard tonight a couple of different models for how that should work. Herefore, and I was going to, I was speaking with Member Olson about this very question. When I first came to the city of Inglewood, uh, almost four years ago, there was a grant-funded position for emergency management that was funded by the Department of Homeland Security that was in the Fire Department. That individual struggled with the Fire Department, I think it was more of, of, uh, personality clash with the, the Chief at the time. That position was then moved underneath Commander Engler in the Police Department, and then the grant funding went away from DHS, uh, for that position. The problem with putting emergency management in the Police Department doesn't really get to the heart of ensuring that we have training and development and understanding and awareness amongst all departments. And so it has been put forward, and you heard. And so, it has been put forward, and you heard it this evening as well, that that position probably should be somehow under the city manager's office, within the city manager's office, so that it has a wider sweep, a greater sense of urgency amongst employees and understanding. And I don't, I'm not trying to grow my head count. This is just, if we're going to look at a chief resiliency officer or emergency manager, that's where that role probably would be best positioned, to be able to get to all the departments.
Point of information, please. Wouldn't it still be considered safety?
Well, that's, I think organizationally, it makes sense to be in your department, but I think we need to consider that position when we're thinking about public safety.
Yes.
I mean, I would still consider that, even though whoever manages it.
Yeah.
I think she makes a very good point, that we would still consider that part of the safety cost.
You may, but understand this, emergency management is not all about public safety. As you just recently saw and we recently experienced, cyber attack had nothing to do with public safety. It impacted public safety, but it's not public safety.
Public would, might disagree with you.
Well, I actually, I do agree with the city manager on that. So, okay, I think that question has been answered. Were you, were you okay with the answer?
Sure.
I think we should discuss it more when we're doing the budget, on exactly what we consider that regardless of where it's at.
Sure.
Because in my mind, public safety is very important, and that piece of it.
Yeah.
Whether it's not all, you know, under the police department, but it is safety-related, so.
It has safety componentry, yes, no doubt about it.
Okay.
And whatever that conversation is like in two weeks, well, obviously, if there's supplemental funding in '18, that would be built into the base going forward into '19.
Did you make a note that we need to?
So, we're going to dig in deeper to this on the day we spend together. Council member question?
Thank you. And on that note, with information can be brought back, on 1C, operational funds funding for additional operating needs may come from grants, forfeiture funds or premium. Can you list those forfeiture funds we might have? Are you guys aware of any now?
Yes. Matter of fact, we just had a forfeiture board meeting today. So, as you may recall or may not recall, you might not be here long enough, prior to 2015 and '16, cities were able to gain quite a bit of forfeiture funding through drug busts or other seizures that had taken place. During the Obama administration, there was a freeze upon that, because there was a belief that governments were utilizing their police powers to unnecessarily seize private assets of private individuals. And so, that recently, though, has been loosened up somewhat. And so, we have members of our police department who serve on multi-jurisdictional task force, whether it's the auto theft task force, or DEA task force, or Rappahoe County. And when our officers are involved in an arrest of a bad actor who has obtained things illegally, the courts go through their piece and they actually figure out where those monies or assets should really go. But at the end of the day, there are forfeiture funds that come to the city of Inglewood. Recently, as I mentioned today, we had a forfeiture fund meeting where the chief asked to purchase breathalyzer devices for each of the officers, which makes sense. They're constantly in use, they need them. We have a contract with a company called an intoxicilizer, and so now, instead of having a shared intoxicilizer that they have to go back and pick up or borrow from some other officer, or have an officer drive it over to a particular call, each of them have their own. We just used some forfeiture funds that were obtained from, I don't know if they were federal forfeitures or state forfeiture funds, to acquire some ballistic shields for the department so that could stop a round that may come out of a semi-automatic weapon. And so, we're trying to acquire equipment like that, that is less than $20,000, but has a benefit for public safety through those forfeiture funds. So, that's an example of what we did. We also today authorized the expenditure of some funds to acquire new digital camera kits for our detectives, because the old digital cameras are failing and the missing pieces of equipment that they need, such as lenses and, you know, things like that. So, forfeiture funds transpire. You can't rely upon a particular figure each year in the budget, because crimes happen and you don't know what you're going to come away with from the state and federal government. But forfeiture funds have played a part in helping to fund our public safety, and specifically our police operations in the past.
And I certainly recall the controversy surrounding those that probably still exists in certain circles. Are you able to provide that list then of just even what we did in 2017? How much we?
With forfeitures? Yes, sir.
Please, thank you.
Yeah.
Council member Olson?
Manager Kek, what do you need for us on one tonight, exactly? Do you just want to get a reading on some of this?
Yeah, I want to get an understanding of, last year, for example, it wasn't until September or October that the council said, "You know what? We want more officers, we want them now." And I was like, "Well, the budget had primarily been set, and so we had to do some exchanges and trades with respect to not having another street sweeper, for example, and some other things, and we deleted the budget to make sure that we could move forward with additional public safety." What I'm trying to gain from you this evening is if you're going to forecast, that you're going to say, "I want more officers," I'd rather know earlier rather than later, so that we don't get into a point where you begin to pit department against department. So, it seemed like public safety was the winner last year, and somebody else had to give and take. But that's the nature of our budgeting. But I'd rather know that upfront, to be able to build those assumptions in rather than later. Not to say that you can't bring it up later, don't misconstrue what I just stated, but it would be best to understand now, if you want more officers, we want more code enforcement officers, I can begin to look at that and build that in now as opposed to later.
So, given that, thank you, that's helpful. Actually, it's been in two different times where we threw city managers off a bit by coming up with new officers at the end and having to change the budget a bit, so I know that can be weird. I would, if we're going to consider personnel needs, I would like to have it clearly laid out, what our current number of officers are, what our gaps are, what seems to be the average gap of people being out of commission to operate, and how does that compare to similar kind of crime rates and sort of what the benchmarking is? I think that sometimes we get really stuck on some numbers, that we don't really know how to compare, and to be wise about it, I would want the chief, of course, to breathe into this again, to say, "Yes, I absolutely need this, or I don't." And you know what? This is not the best use, and it's hard for someone like that to say that. So, I would prefer to get a lot of comparative analysis to similar kinds of, I mean, I'm just, I'm stuck on a bit of similar first-tier cities that are dealing with this sandwich between different kinds of situations. So, what's normal? The other thing on the capital needs and the operational needs, I would want to have a little clearer idea of what are those at this point, given that we have a new building and things happening there, and how the premium would work with that. And then the operational, again, I just applaud our staff. The police and the parks in particular, I know others as well are amazing in getting grants, but you can't always count on those. So, what kinds of things do you see as coming that we can prioritize? And if maybe there's, you know, in the next five years, we really think we need to get to this, but this next year, this is our first, our top one. So, if we get some prioritization, I think that would be more helpful.
Yeah, certainly. And matter of fact, I just was talking to Chief Collins last week with respect to large capital items aside from the building, and the one that I think is beginning to really come to the surface or the top is the need for a new records management system. I believe we've had this discussion before. The current records management system provider is a company that has really lost just market share, and they're not reinvesting back in, and we're beginning to have some problems. And you know that we've also just recently moved to a regional computer-added dispatch program called Tri-Tech. And with that Tri-Tech CAD program now, we have an opportunity to buy the Tri-Tech records management module that would allow regional cooperation with records. And so, we don't have that right now. We just have our own data and our own database, and we have to make a telephone call or an email to a surrounding jurisdiction to look at their data. But that's going to be coming forward, and it's a big number. I mean, we're talking $450,000 need for replacement of that system, and it's a big-ticket item that if it could be paid for via the bond premium, that would alleviate the pressure upon the general fund to cover that cost. So, that's an example of an item.
Okay, that's great. That's really helpful when we can see some, at least for me, I don't know if it is for others, to see that kind of specificity and what we're comparing to. I, from my perspective, I always want our expert professional staff to be the ones who are setting some of their priorities of this.
Yes.
And we can test it against what we're hearing within the public, to say, "They really do want more code." Then we can move in that direction, but within the experts who have to work day-to-day in this field, I want to trust that they're coming up with a pretty good sense of what their priorities need to be and how we fund them.
Okay.
That's my perspective.
And I think some of that is absolutely what we hope the interplay is, especially as we get into May and June with our department directors coming before you and talking about what to expect for 2019, and some of the things that they're building into their budget, which would be proposed to Manager Kek. So, you'll still have that opportunity to hear from them, which will be positive. So, it's some of those other items, those larger policy issues, I think, is what we want to make sure we start getting at over the next several weeks, so that if we want to provide additional direction to our departments, we can do that. So, for instance, perhaps we have a discussion with you earlier about the RMS system, given that opportunity, but with some of the more specifics over code enforcement philosophy, or what is our authorized staffing level, and what do you expect to see? What are you seeing out in the community with your crime data? Perhaps that could be handled in some of those more specific discussions in front of you.
That would be helpful to me.
Okay.
Good to know. Council member Martinez?
Thank you, kind of piggybacking on what Council member Olson said. Last year or the year before, didn't we also hire a part-time or full-time social worker with the police department?
That was discussed in last year's budget. We didn't pull the trigger on that, because we have a, I can't remember the name, it's like a county agency that actually has a social worker that's going to begin to work with our department at no cost. Is that correct, Commander Engler?
Yes.
Yes.
Two days a week.
Two days a week. So, that's going to be helpful. We want to start there and actually see how that could work. I know that the chief was very, very concerned with ensuring that the integration of such position and how that would work would be, have some time before he invested more money into something like that. So, you're correct, that was discussed in the fiscal year '18 budget preparation, and now that we actually have an opportunity to have this social worker working with our staff, we want to see how that works before we try, before we buy anymore.
And where is this person going to come from? What budget or what partnership?
Actually, we're not paying for it.
What partnership?
The county, there's a county health, a county health agency, yeah. Do you know the name of that?
I think it's what used to be Tri-County Health.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's part of Tri-County Health. So, I can't remember the name, it's slipping my mind. I can see their, I know where they are located, on Santa Fe Boulevard, next to Denver Seminary there, but yeah, they have a social worker that's going to begin working with our staff.
Sometime this year or?
This year, yeah, right now.
Thank you. Council member Berentine?
But we did fund the position.
You funded additional officers, not a social worker.
But we didn't do all of the officers, because I thought we just did the grant too for some position for it. What happens then is that we start doing things anecdotally, and we go, "Well, we need this communication system," or the social worker that we thought might have been put into the budget or the additional officers, and whether that happens or doesn't happen, or the schooling for the officer, whether we paid for that or not. And we can't deal with these issues, I think, kind of piecemeal like that. We need to make sure that we're, we've got the whole, the whole picture for each one of these sections as we're discussing them, because otherwise, we're just pulling one particular piece out without acknowledging what else is going on within that budget, and we need to have that whole thing together at one time. So that the police issue happened, because the chief told us he needed more officers. Then he said he didn't, but we had incidences happen last year, and if we have another shooting in this building, or we have an armed person walking around, then the public will go ahead and, we spent a ton of money that we had not planned for, for the additional security of this building alone, and our employees, because it was important to us. And so, I think it's, I think it's a little unfair that, I mean, there were other incidences that happened that kind of can be the catalyst that are out of all of our control. When some situation happens, that we go, this is, that brings it to the forefront that we've got a problem. So, I would like to, because each one of these is going to take an awful long time for us to discuss, and what I think is happening is that we're, then, I don't mean to put it this, I mean, you have some things that you're passionate about, that you think would be helpful, that you know your departments need or they're looking for. And so, I want to hear the sales pitch piece of that, of why we should be doing something or why we should put money in there. But it has to be in the context of the entire budget and what we're doing and what we may be giving up or not at that time, with the whole picture of it. And I don't think we can do that adequately to answer the specific questions like that at this, right now.
Sure, and I can appreciate your position, but I appreciate my position too. Trying to develop a budget without getting some ground rules and direction from you as a council is like trying to grasp the wind. And I've been grasping the wind for the last few years, and what I need from you as a councilperson and as a council as a whole is very clear policy direction, because what we hear, and I'm not, this isn't a rant, this is true, I can go back and replay the meetings at the end of the budget, and there's the comment, "Well, we didn't have enough substantive discussion on this budget. This was a horrible process. Where's the process?" So, what we're trying to do is front-load this right now with policy-level discussion and questions that you would, you, if I were an elected official, these are the types of questions that I think that would need to be answered, because this is what I hear from the public. You may hear something similar from your constituents, but they want to know, "How are you going to be sustainable? What are we going to do to fund public safety? What are we going to do to ensure that we have viable parks and everything else, you know, infrastructure in our parks?"
Oh, fairness, City Manager, I thought that's what we were having an entire meeting for an entire day to flesh out, or way earlier than we had started it in either previous years, and I wasn't bemoaning that, I just don't think you're going to get specifics on this. I thought that's what Saturday was for, so we could have a more robust conversation than what was scheduled for this was, you know, half hour? I don't think that was ever really what was planned, is that you were going to get total direction on where we were going with the budget.
No, but as you heard my introductory statement, as well as what was written in the memorandum to council, was this is the start of a longer discussion. And we certainly do want to have the strategy and policy discussion with the council, but that's one aspect of a larger question. What we're trying to do is we're trying to build the foundation, a solid foundation, to understand where we're going from a budgetary standpoint. And so, you're exactly right, we want to spend eight hours with you talking about strategy, but it's not about a strategy that's going to deal with a budget. This is a separate discussion. You need that strategy to help inform you what we're going to be working on over the next two years or longer.
Right, because that's the beginning piece of us identifying where we're, what the priorities are, so that we can go ahead and answer some of these questions. And I think that's happening in a very timely manner.
Well, can, and I would like to go on, I absolutely agree with what you're saying, but I also see that we need some foundational pieces. All of these questions tie together, there is absolutely no doubt, and I think the strategy piece is going to tie it together. But I also think that we, there are some things that we need to talk about. I believe code enforcement came up at both town hall meetings, it came up on the citizen survey. I do believe that code enforcement is an area that we do need to address. Now, whether that means that we need more code enforcement officers, or whether we need a records clerk to answer the phone and take calls, so that we can put the code enforcement people we have out actually doing the work, I think that we need to figure out how to address it the most efficiently, because it would be less expensive to hire someone to answer the phone and do that piece, and then actually get code enforcement out there. Council member Olson?
So, thank you. I don't agree with everything that Council member Berentine just said. I do think we need to be starting now on this. So, I mean, I am glad we're having this conversation tonight, and maybe this can help frame us all better, you can test us out. It seems to me like what perhaps you.
But the timeframe is what I was asking.
Well, he's combined both items, so we're doing both together, so we've got more time. So.
I want to know how much, can we please at least decide how much time? If we want to spend additional time, then let's agree that we're going to spend another hour on this.
Point of order, we are spending till nine o'clock, and so we're talking about this now. Go ahead, Council member Olson.
So, what I was wondering, as I was looking at this for information, what do you need from me and any one of us here, is what would I need to help decide on the capital needs? What would I?
Yes.
And so, maybe that's where we can catalog? I mean, I could tell you right now, some of the things that I would like to see us prioritize under some of these, I definitely think potentially funding police capital through premium, I would be in favor of that. I'd just stay it out there. I don't have trouble with that. On operational needs, you know, can we count on grants, forfeitures and all that? I'm fine with using those. The B is. The B is the one that we might have to have more direction on, but that's where I would want from the chief, a little bit more additional information. So I don't know if you want to go through these like that, to say, what do you need to know, we need to know?
Yes.
In order to be better prepared for the next time you sit with us.
Thank you, you've articulated well, I believe, what I'm trying to achieve, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
And you're exactly right, and it's walking through these points and understanding each of your thoughts and ideas, and if there could be some sort of consensus or coalescing around one of those ideas, the mayor has enunciated a great one, and I think that's perfect, have somebody answer the phone and take code enforcement questions, and then feed them to them, rather than adding another person on the street, or maybe there's a way to cross-train our police officers to do more code enforcement in addition to everything else they're doing. I don't know. We don't know those answers, but if you throw that stuff out, those are things we can go back, chew on, and bring forth and have a better informed budget to bring back to you as a council.
Okay, thank you. And so, Councilmember Wink, would you like to weigh in on some of those questions from number one?
Sure, sorry. Forgive me, I reformatted.
That's okay, if you want to take a minute to think about it.
I can go back to it. Number one, here I am. So how should we approach funding for public safety?
Mm-hmm.
You really want to know what I think? So, capital needs, potentially fund police capital needs through premium. So generally, and to, wow, that's really loud, don't it? And to the point that Manager Keck mentioned in his introductory statement, I don't know if managing a municipal city government is as hard and fast as saying money in equals money out, so I think we need to be innovative when we're looking at solving our financial puzzle.
If nothing jumped off of the page at you, if you just want to think a little bit more-
On what you're asking her and any one of us from here, are you asking for us to weigh in on each of the three?
Or just any-
Or to do what I suggested, which is, what do you need to know the next time we get together?
Which is what you were doing.
To be able to answer the capital needs.
Yes, yes.
I mean, is it good enough to ask that question? On some of these, I can answer it. On some of these, I don't. I need more information.
Absolutely. Okay, so, and if you don't have anything right now?
Could we save a little bit more time if we go number one, and maybe we can raise hands if we have additional questions and go around that way instead of number one?
Sure.
How about that?
Sure.
My hand is down on number one.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, and I mean, I do think also there is, these things all tie together.
Yeah.
Density, if we're going to increase density, then we have other things to address. So, does anyone else want to weigh in?
Needs clarification on number one.
On question number one, need clarification about anything, or Councilmember Martinez?
On the personnel needs and regarding code enforcement, I would like to get some information on how many code officers we have now, versus how many calls we get, and where we think some gaps are. Like you mentioned earlier, I think that would be helpful. And then, one A, capital needs, I'm comfortable using the premium for our capital needs, I think the language is clear, that's fine. And operational uses, grants, forfeiture funds, we can't always guarantee that we're going to get those, but I think everyone, all of our departments do a great job actively seeking those out, so I think we should always continue to seek, to actively, but we can't count on that budget either, so.
And I think we can have that, part of that discussion with the overall personnel as it relates to police. I know we had this discussion briefly last year, but the largest grants available for law enforcement to add personnel are the COPS grants, and while that's useful, that typically only funds a year, year and a half of those positions, and then we're on the hook for the salaries after that. So again, we wouldn't want to commit to that without having that discussion with council on, okay, great, we might be eligible for a grant, but then we're also on the hook for that in the subsequent budget year. So that, we can add that to the discussion as well.
Thank you. Do you need more information from us this evening? I mean, are we at a point that we could stop, or is there something you need to-
Yeah, no, we can stop, we're at a good point, Mayor, I think we can, and I really appreciate the nature of the questions that have arisen tonight. This allows us to go back and bring forth some information that allows you to chew on something, so you can actually see some data. Calls for service, number of officers, calls for service and code, and number of code enforcement people, and that's helpful. Prioritized list of capital projects, and how might they be funded, and some of that information. I think that's perfect, it's a great start.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berentine.
As far as the capital needs for potentially funding any capital, police capital needs through the premium, I'd need to know what the capital needs are, and what you would be looking at to fund through the premium, and where they would have been funded otherwise, or if they would not have been funded at all. The personnel needs, we're not starting from ground zero, we already increased personnel needs, so we need to have something similar to what Councilmember Martinez asked for, and that's, where were we five years ago? What's our staffing? And how, we haven't been stagnant on that issue, not us or the previous council, or the previous council before that. So we would have to have some information on that, and then the, and whether or not we still need additional funding or not, where that would kind of come from, but I'm not sure when you just say additional funding, like what your idea is about where that would come from, but we at least need to know where we're at with the personnel. Operational needs, the, like you said, if you have some ideas on what the grants are and that, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
So I can't really give you an answer on policy on it until I know a little bit more around that, but I would be certainly for using the premium if it was reasonable, but I'm not just going to blanketly say use the premium without knowing that information.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I have one more idea, I'm wondering, I mean, I'm willing to do this, this is really helpful to provide the questions, and I would be glad to spend some time this week on my own, thinking through what would I need to know to answer this, and send that off to you and Mark, and let you all kind of see what the rest of us are also thinking, and so you can get, because I do want that May 8th, is it the 8th? No.
Eight is a Tuesday.
It's the 8th, man, something must be going on that day. I would like us to be really well-prepared and not be asking you for stuff that we could have-
Right.
-been knowing to ask you ahead of time.
Appreciate that.
And make everyone's time really well worth it.
If you have that time, that would be appreciated.
I'm glad with that, or others as well.
That's for the remainder of the questions, correct.
Do you have pretty well fleshed out for one? I mean-
I have some more questions.
Okay, Councilmember Wink.
I have to confess, when I looked a little lost earlier when you asked me that question, it's because I was actually typing out answers.
Ah.
So I was actually working-
We'll take your answers, too.
But yeah, I would be more than happy, I would be more constructive for you, I think, it's more for you, Manager Keck, and Assistant Manager Wolf to weed through, but I think I would be able to contribute more if I did that.
And we have, we have one more full study session, correct? And I don't remember, did we put this on-
Let me look real quick.
Okay.
Before the 5th.
Yeah.
One more full one.
Yes.
And I think what we can do, if you were to provide some guidance on those questions, is to try to parse out what issues we know we need to bring back, provide more information to you, and have those policy discussions as a part of study session, and then what issues, based on your answers, can we tee up for that strategy session? Because we know that code enforcement is a great example, that you're not going to commit to saying, we want proactive or reactive code enforcement in your strategic plan, without getting a better idea of the history of the staffing and all that kind of stuff. So we'll try to, we'll try to parse out some of that based off of those answers.
Okay, but here's, here's part of the problem.
Okay.
Part of the problem is if each of us individually send all of our answers to you-
Yeah.
-that is not open and transparent to the public, and so that creates another issue.
Yeah.
I don't mind with you putting it all together and making it public.
I know you don't mind.
Does anybody else? I don't mind.
Go ahead, Councilmember, or not.
It's getting late, I think we're all tired, but if the direction is for everybody to send their responses to the city manager, and have him create a document and send it out to everybody for review prior to the next meeting, that absolutely complies with open records, and it can be made available to the public.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Open meeting, I mean.
All right.
And Mayor, the 23rd is your next meeting to talk about the budget. So right now, on the 23rd, you have the budget, council policy manual, emergency management's back, and a discussion of the joint use agreement for the Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Some light topics.
Light topics.
One last question, Manager Keck.
Yes.
In your opening, you talked about these five, the fiscal sustainability down to number five, organizational excellence. Not all of those are included in these four questions, would you, do you have other questions you want us to be considering, or will they be forthcoming, or should we assume this is really?
Well, these are the major policy questions that Mr. Wolf and I both, after walking through this, felt we needed some answers and clarity upon.
Okay.
These are also some themes that emanate pretty much every year, and so we want to make sure that we're beginning to spend the time qualitatively, so that we can't say at the end of the budget process, well, we didn't have time to talk about it, or we didn't, we missed this, or we missed that, we want to do that upfront.
So I, when I see the organizational excellence one, I think of things that did come up in the town halls, and you brought some of these up, or others about responsiveness of the city, and there may be some organizational excellence purchases that we need to make, or reorganizations, or re, I don't know, hiring or something, and I wouldn't want that to get left out, because that was a key thing that came up in the town halls, too.
It was.
Along with code, and yeah. So I wouldn't want us to leave out some of those things that you might be considering, and you want us to give some perspective on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember's choice, who would like to start? Councilmember Berentine.
I appreciate that the police answered the question on the policy and procedure. We do have a policy and procedure, I'm sure all of you saw this, and I believe that the gentleman availed himself of it, that a person reporting, a person, suspect, victim, or witness who has additional information or a correction to a police report can, or an incident, can go ahead and submit a written statement under the original report number, and it will become part of the report. And so just to complete my education on the process and procedure, I would like to ask for the revised police report and how that looks, how they handle that.
Which report are we talking about?
Whatever the deal was for the giving hurt that-
Oh, okay.
With the picture thing where the-
Mr. Walker's-
Yeah, he came to council on that one, so I can try and get the police report number, but you'll probably get it a lot faster than I can.
Yeah, we'll get it.
So just to see how that looks, so that I know that, how that process works, so I'm glad we have that in place. The next-door neighbor control, and taking down posts and conversations, because there was a very heated conversation, and I guess more than one area, but I don't get to see all of the areas, about homelessness, and people going back and forth on the issue, and then all of a sudden it was gone. And so I got quite a few complaints, and a call and a couple of emails, where people go, why is the city taking these down? And I go, whoa. They go, Tony Alnardi took the post down. So one person was actually upset, because they thought the city was trying to hurt the homeless. The other two were about, you're squashing our conversation because you're aimed, the city doesn't want us to be angry about what's going on with homelessness. So I wanted to make it very clear that Tony Alnardi does not take down any posts, the police, nor does the city, do anything with next door.
We're not weak.
The next-door member agreement, next door, just for the record, is a private social network for neighborhoods. It is a private social network, the city has no control over it, we don't own it, we are not involved with it, it's a private social network for neighborhoods. Under account types, there are the opportunities for special restricted functionality accounts to government agencies, such as city offices, or leads or fire departments, and to businesses, nonprofits, news media, and other organizations. Special accounts agree to additional terms and cannot see neighborhood discussions. Now I do not believe that's the case for Tony Alnardi, I believe that she is able to go ahead and see the neighborhood discussions, but she has no authority to take down a post. So go to the neighborhood lead, and go beat on their door for their heavy-handedness and squash and your constitutional right to talk, but it was not Tony Alnardi or the police department of the city. So there I have made my plea for that piece of it, and I do appreciate that next door's on there. I happen to be a lead for the area I'm in, I just, I'm a lead, because I started it. I had no qualification to be a lead, I didn't pass a test to be a lead, I didn't get vetted to be a lead, I just am a lead. So I do think that there are some that are very heavy-handed. I have never taken down a post, nobody has ever threatened or been so vile as that they would have arise to that occasion. There have been plenty of posts I've disagreed with, but I would never do something like that, and I think some of these leads ought to reconsider their heavy-handedness with it, because it's causing some problems. Scott Moore, who owns the architecture place in the barber shop in the house behind that, apparently was unimpressed with our council meeting, he put his property up for sale on Tuesday. So I am saddened by that, I would like people to have a little bit more assurance that these issues, that we're going to follow the law, and you know, that these issues will be resolved, but that was very unfortunate. Thursday is Four Gs, the Mexican restaurant, they're ribbon cutting, their first-year anniversary, and they are asking people to come by, it's going to be from 5:30 to 8:00, and I think this week, I was, I was able to post it in my area, I don't, and I think some people posted it in other areas, they have some, a lot of specials, and a lot of celebration, but that night, Thursday night, the 12th, they will be doing a ribbon cutting, they will have some birthday cake, they will have specials on all of their stuff, and I think some appetizers and food for people, I'm very happy with, proud of them, nice to have that kind of restaurant in my area. They have a 44-year history in Inglewood, they started over on Santa Fe, Juan and his wife, he's passed, his wife is, she's going to have some of the family there from the other locations, and from, and from the original one that was over there on Santa Fe. I think the building is still there, very tiny little building, and I remember doing some, I was the bookkeeper for a business that was over by the plant, way back, way back, and I remember going to that little place before, when Santa Fe was still pretty, a lot of dirt roads sometimes, so this will be fun, and you're all invited, hope everybody can attend, it goes from 5:30 to 8:00.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. So regarding the resilient cities, I mentioned earlier, a few people have asked me for information, so I'll share the resources with you, Manager Keck.
Okay.
And then maybe you and your team can, so that I don't have to send a message to all of you. Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood, ACE had our monthly meeting last week on the 4th, and during this meeting, part of the meeting, we dedicated to all of us handwriting note cards personally addressed to several business members in Inglewood, thanking them for their many years of service and dedication to the community. So it felt really nice, we each wrote them out, and Mr. Hollingsworth was able to pop them into the mail immediately after. We inserted an ACE pamphlet and a few other pieces of information, so that they could contact us if they needed anything also. Also during that meeting, there was the recognition of businesses for years of service with some internet, some web-based decal, or something they might put in a physical storefront, that continues to be discussed, and I know that the group is documenting the idea to then present it to council for consideration. Some dates, April 6th, first, that's gone, what are we, today, the 9th? Tomorrow, the 10th, is a business of breakfast from the Chamber, it's at Colorado Neurological Institute, 7:30 in the morning. Friday, April 20th, is Third Friday Coffee with- Friday, April 20th, is Third Friday Coffee with Omni Development, 7:30 a.m. Business after hours with Community Banks of Colorado at 5:00 on Tuesday, April 24th. And the Chamber's also going to be holding, hosting Small Business Saturday, the day after Thanksgiving. So they're moving along with that. And just a little update for the next Budget Advisory Committee meeting. The group expects to review their authorizing ordinance, make initial decisions on the annual report content. They'll be reviewing results of a survey they submitted to staff regarding the usage of the city's coffee machines. And will continue to prepare for the 2019 budget cycle and the ongoing events related to the upcoming year's budget. They plan in the next few meetings, next several meetings really, to just follow along with our discussions of budgets, so that they're aligned in terms of their duties so far as what we're doing. And I think that's it for me tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. We had the Culture Arts Commission meeting last week. It was really great, as per the usual. I love that group. We had Alison Carney there with us, and she brought Peter Fromater, probably butchering his last name.
Fromater.
From Swedish, yeah. He's the public relations point person for Swedish, and they are talking about doing some kind of collaborative partnership with Culture Arts Commission, which is really exciting. So if they decide to do that, I will let you know when more information becomes available for that. What else? Also had a good session with the, with Councilmember Berentine and Manager Keck with the school board folks last Friday. So that was really good. We're excited to get that up and going again, and it was great to talk with them. Also, this Thursday, I believe at like 5:00 at the library, is the student art reception. I think it's at 5:00. It's a really fun event. Lots of the art is up now, so hopefully you'll be able to join us for that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I add to the meeting? There was some discussion on the monthly magazine and collaborative effort with that, and maybe them allowing us to have a similar opportunity. Some of the data they're willing to share with some of the local groups that just started. On the homeless, they asked that they would probably be better if they were directly contacted, and I believe that that's already underway. And then the issue of the park land, and so Councilmember Martinez, it was an awesome meeting. I really enjoyed working with you on that. Agreed, I'm not so sure wisely, but she agreed to go ahead and get all of that kind of written down, and then share that with this council. And we had such an energizing discussion, and the issues that were brought up, that we made a decision that we would meet in June. So originally, we were thinking about maybe quarterly. This group really hasn't been meeting that much. But then I think there was so much energy about what was going on, that they decided to go ahead and meet in June to kind of follow up on some, some of these issues. So I know that...
Yep, I'll write all that up in chapters.
She's writing it up, and then the city manager can go ahead and make sure that council knows all of what we were wanting this council to discuss. And then they're bringing their issues to their school board as well. So we should know before we have the deadline in May for them.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Potem. I caught a fair amount of the conversation that occurred on Nextdoor as well regarding homelessness. I, Councilmember Olson wisely brought up having a study session on this, and I think it's something that hopefully, again, we'll address sooner than later. If, in fact, this gentleman goes through with the sale of that property, that is bothersome to me. I mean, that is really too bad, if that is the case. Coupled with some of the photos that we saw tonight, there was a felony warrant, you know, that they arrest now there. I think it's something that the city really needs to address. We certainly had a fair amount of comment on it in the beginning, but I don't know if that's really working towards a solution, or putting any practical policy around it either. Again, I hope that we get that to a study session sooner than later. I don't think it's an issue that's getting better before it's getting worse.
Right. I agree, and I do believe it's coming up. We're checking out some resources, too, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
So that's where I will pick up then, hon. I was curious as to what the timeline is for that study session, and what resources that you might be checking out. Maybe you can just let us know who you're thinking about. We may know of some others. I know the state has folks that are concentrated on this as well, that could be of help to us if we haven't accessed those. I'm eager to have those conversations. I am not at all a believer that this will ever go away. I wish we could say we could solve homelessness in our lifetime, and if you don't set that goal, you won't make very much of a progress, like who wants to say, "Well, let's solve half of it." We got to keep that a high goal, but I know that realistically, it's hard work. It's a wicked problem. Wicked problems have very clumsy solutions. They're not ever really elegant, otherwise we would have found them by now. So I have not disillusioned about where this is, and that many people have to be at the table to solve it. It's not a one-size-fits-all, so, but we got to, we got to get to the table. We haven't done it very well yet, and council has not really taken it up, so it's good. I wanted to, yeah, Councilmember Wink, you took all my Chamber of Commerce liaison stuff, so that's great. No, I'm glad you brought it up, because there is one tomorrow. So if you were planning on going, or if you aren't, I mean, it's amazing, sometimes very few people do RSVP, and then they don't show up, so they have leftover food. So I'm sure that if you popped in tomorrow without knowing, it would be fine. Dr. Cog, Eric, City Manager Keck and I met just briefly this afternoon. It's surprising to me how much we have actually known for the last couple of years about what's going on with Dr. Cog, and I'd like that to change, and I've said that before. There are now three meetings a month.
Wow.
And they can really benefit us, or at least be tangentially beneficial to us. And so we're talking about how to create a good alternative, to have an alternate that is more in the public works, or more in our transportation area, to perhaps be able to go to some of the meetings, which will require a vote from us to do that, from within the staff, or whether it's Manager Keck, we don't, we don't know yet. But we're coming up with some things. I just wanted you to know that. And there's probably an IGA coming down the road in how we're going to work together as well within the subregion. But we'll, we'll be coming up. I just wanted you to know that we're meeting and chatting a bit about it, because we should be way more at the table with this whole thing than we have been in the past. It's been a very passive voice. And I think there are some things there that even if we don't benefit directly from getting some funding, we ought to be saying what we think should be happening in some pretty clear ways. And you all should be breathing into that. We should know what those things are. When I'm asked to vote, I want to know, my council, our city believes this would be the best thing for Inglewood. So we're going to try and, try and get that on target for you. I am concerned a bit about how we treat our staff within public setting, and particularly last Monday night, I was very concerned about calling out one of our police officers in a particular way, and then even, even suggesting that staff are complaining about things. And I want to make sure that we have a process here, and I don't know if it's under decorum, or whether just a shared policy or agreement, that we, we will refrain from doing that and calling any one person out, and that if people on our staff team, Manager Keck's staff and the city attorney's staff are complaining to us about anything, that you should be the first one to know that, or you should be the first one to know that. And I hope we could agree to that. I don't know if that happens for you, if you do hear when we're, if we hear complaints. I just think it's so important for staff morale and to make sure people know that they're being heard, and that you're hearing it, to correct anything that comes up, so... And I'm coming to the parks and rec thing Thursday night, just a reminder.
Yeah, we noticed that as a potential quorum of a council, I think.
So you posted it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have library tomorrow night, so hopefully we'll bring back some things from library soon. Thanks for the art thing, that was the reminder. Yeah. Good.
Okay. Thank you very much. And did you say that we're putting the camping thing, camping ordinance on the agenda for a study session, or have we...
We haven't developed one yet. I think what we're looking at is best practices for communities that have already instituted this. I think, as was mentioned by Sergeant McGrath, Boulder has a camping ordinance that's fairly strong, and it's been tested by the American Civil Liberties Union to be workable. So we will look at that and work with our city attorney to ensure that we bring forth something, but only when it's ready. So right now, I don't have a date for that.
Okay.
We do have a date, though, for the homelessness discussion. That's May 14th.
May 14th. Okay. All right. Perfect. And I just, I have a request also. There are apparently a lot of cars parked on Union west of Santa Fe, behind the Dirty Bookstore. That's what this one lady says, that's where her business is.
Okay.
So there are a lot of cars that are parked there for weeks on end. And so, and also, I was told that perhaps there's an ordinance that we don't enforce the three-day thing anymore, the three-day parking.
We do if it's parked in the right-of-way, but is this on the street itself?
This is on, on the street.
On Union?
Next to, on Union, next to all of those units, all those businesses. And they're kind of, the person that complained to me is kind of concerned that perhaps some of those businesses, or there's also a car lot over there, that they park some of them on the street, too.
But it also came up that some police officers have been telling people for cars that are on the right-of-way, that an ordinance that somebody passed doesn't give them the right to move that anymore. And that didn't affect that. So there might be some communication.
Confusion. Okay. I'll put that as a council request.
Okay. All right. City manager's choice?
I don't believe they have anything this evening.
Okay. Thank you. City attorney?
Yes.
Oh, you have something.
One of the things that the city manager's been directing all the members of the staff, and I'm absolutely following suit, is to bring ourselves up to date with the current law, the current processes, and the current procedures associated with addressing homelessness. The laws, everything has changed dramatically in the last 10 years. And one of the concerns that he's been raising with all of us, and especially with my department, is that we be ready to deal with the issue as it exists today, and not as how it existed five years, even 10 years ago. So keeping that in mind, the questions that you were asking are absolutely the right questions to ask, but we are not sure what all the right answers are. We could answer what the, what these answers were five years ago, but litigation is changing things, and there are just too many, there are too many pressures. So one of the things that my department has been doing is attending the continuing legal education seminars that are put on by CML, where other city attorneys within Colorado have actively been addressing, trying and succeeding, and trying and failing to, to address some of these issues. Camping ordinances, there have been, there have been more fails than wins over the last five years. And we don't want to make the problem worse by just being one more to practice. Can we guarantee a win if we do something innovative? Of course we can't. But we want, we want to be as ready as we possibly can. So we're attending those things. The other thing that I'm doing is I will be attending the International Municipal Lawyers Association meeting, three days of that in two weeks. And there's half a day on homelessness and the current status of homelessness litigation in the United States. I will be giving you guys all a report. Everything I learn, I want to share with you, because there's no way that you can, you can prepare yourselves to even ask the questions you want to ask if you don't know what we know. So you'll be getting a report from me, probably about April 26th. And just letting you know, we're taking these, these issues incredibly seriously, but there's so much to know, and it's such a moving target. So just to give you FYI, I'll be out of the office a couple of days for that, but you will get a report, and I, and I hope you look at it, because we need your input to figure out what direction to even begin to go with some of this stuff. So that's the end of my report.
And then only one response would be that any time an issue is publicly brought, about any issue where somebody's saying that the police aren't doing their job, or that they may have some other issue going on, any time there's any employee or the city manager, and I find out that that has already been stated publicly or being put out there, I will go ahead and defend that employee and make sure that we are dealing with whatever